Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The regular meeting of the Groceal Township Planning Commission will come to order. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item on the agenda tonight is additions and/or deletions to the agenda. Based on the email that was sent out by Brian Borden, I ask that the Item 7, Reviewing of Amended Site Plan, Vacant McComb Street, Lot 2829, Gray's Garden subdivision, Bicycle Restoration Museum, be deleted. And that's the only change the Chair has got. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
I have a motion from Eric. Support. Support from Ann. Discussion. Call a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Item 7 is deleted from the agenda. We will now move to the review of the minutes from the regular meeting of March 18th. Are there any comments on those minutes? Cheryl?
No comment.
Mickey?
No comment.
Ann? Jim?
No comments.
Brian? Eric?
Still not.
Entertain a motion, please, to approve of the minutes as submitted. So moved. Motion from Brian. Support.
Support.
Support from Cheryl. Discussion. Call a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You can still vote.
Okay, we have all ayes. We'll now move to public comment, an opportunity for citizens to speak with the Commission about any item not on the agenda. Anybody have a topic not on our agenda? Okay, seeing no hands, we'll move on. First item is a sketch plan review. Hennepin Point Observation Trail and Deck. The applicant is the Groceal Nature and Land Conservancy, PO Box 12, Groceal. Representing the Conservancy is Doug Thiel, who is, I believe, Vice President, although he may be President. Oh, yes?
That's the old guy.
Oh, you, Liz? Okay, Liz Higle?
You go.
The location in question are lots 57 and 58, Point Hennepin, of EW Voight subdivision. That's the legal description. The common description are two vacant waterfront parcels about 100 feet south of the intersection of Meridian and Annette. The lots are approximately 200 feet wide and about 300 feet deep, and they're on the waterfront side of the west side of Meridian. The proposal is to construct a wood path and an elevated walkway from Meridian to a small elevated platform about 250 feet deep into the property. And this elevated platform will serve as an observation deck for people to look at nature. The DEQ and Army Corps have both reviewed the Nature and Land Conservancy's application to build in wetlands, and both have been approved. The zoning is R1B, single-family residential. The ordinances in question are Article 17, waterfront provisions; Article 21, site plan review; and municipal code ordinance number 208, dealing with wetlands and drainage ways. Little background on this. This application was actually in front of us at the last meeting. But we could not hear it due to a lack of quorum. When we got into the -- when I introduced the topic, the first thing that we always do is make sure that if there are any potential conflicts of interest, that this is raised by commissioners and, in essence, voted on by the Commission as to whether the issue at hand is in fact a conflict or is not. There were two potential conflicts at the last meeting. One dealt with membership. I believe at the time, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 4 of us, 5 of us, were members. But none of us had anything to do with this particular application, nor were officers or board members in the Land Conservancy. So on that basis, the Planning Commission voted and determined that that was not a conflict of interest. However, we did have Mickey, who had a different issue, and would you -- oh, was that you? I'm forgetting. That was Cheryl.
I'm a board member.
Okay, you're a board member.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And Cheryl, you had an issue as well?
Yes.
Okay. And what was your issue again, please, for the public?
My issue is I'm within whatever the allowable neighborhood constraints are, whether it's 500 feet or 300 feet of that lot. I'm not sure which it is, but I live within it, and I've been put on notice for this particular project.
Okay.
I do, too.
Okay, well, so we basically, Board, have two issues here. Okay, one being Mickey being an officer in the organization, she would have had, I presume, a direct say in the submittal. And second, we have the issue of living directly adjacent or within notification distance of this particular application. So we need, I think, to vote on each one of these issues as to whether they constitute a conflict or not. Let's take Mickey's issue first. Being an officer of the Association, what is the opinion of the Commission? What is your opinion, Mickey?
I think you're going to have a tough time getting a quorum without me.
I think that I'm an officer, I should not participate in any of this.
Yeah, okay, well, we have -- we'd have, if both you and Cheryl are disqualified from speaking, we still have a quorum.
Correct.
Okay, so we have Ann, who says that being an officer excludes you from discussion. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion from Ann, is there support?
I'll support.
We have support from Jim. I tend to agree that being a board member, you do have to step aside on this one.
That's fine. I raised that the other meeting, 2 meetings back, that I was concerned with it. I just, I didn't know if you'd have a quorum, because last time you didn't, so.
Well, we appreciate your consideration.
I think it's fair to say that it's not a per se disqualification or a conflict, but I think, I would agree, it's in the best interest that we do this without your involvement.
Okay, so on that note, additional discussion, hearing none. I'll call a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, if you wish to speak about this, you're perfectly entitled to go out in the audience and speak from the floor on this topic. So that is your discretion, at your pleasure. As a citizen, you're entitled to that.
Okay, is that now or after the fact? After what part of the process, I guess?
Okay, I would like you to leave the table and be out there, and if you want to speak, then I'll call on you, and you can come up.
Okay.
Okay? Now, wait a second. We have the second issue of simply being -- we have the second issue, Cheryl. Okay, Cheryl. Cheryl, living in the direct neighborhood of this, does, what is the opinion of the Commission, whether that, in fact, constitutes a potential source for a conflict of interest? Opinions on that, please. Eric?
I think at the last meeting, we had voted that we thought it was a conflict.
Yes, we did. Is that still the consensus of the Commission?
Yes.
If it is, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion from Jay, second.
Support.
Support from Brian. Call a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Cheryl, we would appreciate it, please, if you would maybe join Mickey in the audience. Again, if you have opinion or thoughts about this, you know, I'll call on you as a citizen to speak from the floor. Okay. I think that that allows us now to get into the issue, because there still remain 6 of us, and that does constitute quorum. So 5 of us, 6 of us, whatever. So at this point, having sorted through that issue, we'll now come back to the relevant ordinances. This is being reviewed under Article 21, Site Plan Review, and it is a sketch plan, which means it's a very simple materials requirement coming in front of the Commission. The review process is straightforward. It's the Planning Commission review, and we make a decision. And so that's where we are tonight on this. Brian?
Thank you, Chair. I feel like the whole room kind of got lopsided when I was here. I need to orient my presentation to the right. Thanks again, Mr. Chair. A great introduction, and as per usual, you have stolen at least half of what I was about to say. Of course. Now, I'm not going to say anything, because the computer's frozen.
Oh, gee.
All right, bear with me. After all that. Here we go. All right. Again, much of this is now redundant, but request before you this evening is for a sketch plan review of proposed improvements to the Nature and Land Conservancy's property as vacant site on the west side of Meridian Road, just south of Annette Avenue. The site and surrounding properties are all zoned R1B, which is a single-family residential designation, and as noted by the Chair, there are several pertinent ordinance sections, most importantly, Article 3, Article 17, and Article 21. More specifically, Section 3.3A of the zoning ordinance identifies public parks, open space, bike paths, land designated for preservation purposes as a byright use in the R1B district. Section 17.4, which are your waterfront provisions, lists the appropriate or the acceptable, allowable waterfront structures that one can have and the process that must be followed. In this case, there's a 21-day public review period that is required for waterfront structures. When we get a permit in for a waterfront structure, once we deem it ready to go, Lori sends out a notification to all property owners within 500 feet along that particular portion of waterfront, and gives that, gives those residents an opportunity to either come in with questions or look at the plans, and ultimately, they may request a formal public hearing at the Planning Commission if there are concerns about the project. In this case, we have already gone through that review process. A public hearing was not requested. However, we did, when I say "we," township staff, did receive several comments from a couple of residences, much of which, they sort of echoed the same thing, and I've got a slide on that momentarily. In terms of the project itself, the slide on the left of your screen is an overview of the site. The slide in the bottom right is an overview of the actual platform that's proposed. So in total, the project includes approximately 70 feet of boardwalk over an existing wetland. If you can follow the mouse here, essentially, in this area, there's a 96-square-foot observation platform, which site plan view would be here, and then elevation view, this is an idea of what the structure would actually look like. There's a woodchip trail proposed on either side of the boardwalk, connecting essentially the road frontage of the property all the way to the observation deck. And as the Chairman noted, the applicant did obtain both Army Corps and DEQ approval for this project. This is an aerial view of the project site. Again, this is a little bit faint, so bear with me, but this is the actual boardwalk proposal in here, again, approximately 70 feet in relation to some of the existing vegetation on site. And then here is the platform in this particular area. And I can go back to either of those slides if there are any further questions or you want to look at them again. So a brief overview of the full project and some excerpts from our review letter. The proposed structures do comply with the township's waterfront provisions in terms of placement on the property. If the Commission is to consider approval of this request, we did note a couple of items we felt might be improvements to the overall project, or at least could be beneficial to the community at large, one of which would be bike racks, as we would anticipate that bicyclists would be a pretty important user group for this site, given it's kind of a passive recreation site, and it's a nice stopping point if people are on a ride around the township. This would be a nice place to stop. And then another is, which is a pretty important concern, would be the incorporation of some trashcans, whether they be near the frontage, off of the path, whether they be incorporated as part of the observation deck, whatever the case might be. The last thing we would want to see is people out there using the site and nowhere to throw their trash away, so ultimately, it just becomes a mess, potentially. I showed you just briefly on the aerial photo. The site is pretty heavily wooded, and if you've driven this part of Meridian recently, you can see that it is still very wooded in the, throughout. Not all of it is our high-quality trees. There's some junk in there, quite frankly. But nonetheless, the sketch plan did not include a description of any trees that might be affected for the removal. Our particular concern would be the woodchip trail aspect. Obviously, going through the wetland DEQs already signed off on, it is our understanding that that area is wet, so I don't expect there to be any major trees that would be impacted by the boardwalk. But any clearing that needs to take place as a result of the rest of the project, the applicant needs to be aware, we do have a woodlands ordinance, and they will be required to comply with that. In terms of, I mentioned the woodchip trail. On their plan drawing, it appears as though they're extending, or at least attempting to extend, the woodchip trail all the way to the edge of the roadway itself. In order to do so, a portion of it would encroach into the right-of-way. If that is, in fact, what is proposed, they would need Wayne County approval to do so. So basically, my next comment is just that any work or any activity proposed in the right-of-way does require county approval. The township also has, I mentioned woodlands, the township also has a wetlands protection ordinance. In this case, because we're dealing with a regulated wetland, and DEQ has already issued a permit, the project is technically exempt from those provisions. That ordinance is intended to protect wetlands and drainage ways that are not otherwise already protected. So in this instance, we are essentially deferring our authority to DEQ, and again, a permit has already been issued. Another issue, not only should I say "issue" so much, but another potential zoning concern as it relates to the woodchip trail has to do with its proximity outside of the wetland. By definition, a wetland is a natural feature in your ordinance, and Article 3 of your ordinance requires a 25-foot natural feature setback from the edge of any wetland, in this particular instance. It would also require it from a waterway. In this particular case, you would, and it's noted, the standards are all listed in my review letter, but essentially, in order for them to construct that woodchip trail as proposed, exclusive of the point of the right-of-way, it would require your authorization for an encroachment into that 25-foot natural feature setback. In essence, on both sides of the wetland, the initial 20 feet, 25 feet, is all within that required setback. Everything outside of that would be fine, per ordinance. My final 2 points are probably the biggest concerns that we have from a planning and zoning perspective with this particular request. The first has to do with the fact that the project does not include or propose any off-street parking on the site in particular, and it's very important to note, and this is echoed in my review letter, that off-street parking is not permitted along this portion of Meridian. So in essence, there is no convenient parking for this site if somebody wanted to travel here by car and then visit the site. In essence, what is likely to occur if people do travel here by vehicle would be, the side streets are likely to end up taking the brunt of the parking. Unfortunately, my aerial didn't go all the way, but Annette is here, and then Paulina's a little bit further down here. So from a planning and zoning standpoint, we do have a little bit of a concern on that. I know Chief Porserelli is here this evening as well, so if you have any additional safety concerns or questions about the ability to park on roadways, I'm sure he would be happy to take those as well, if I can speak for you, Joe. I'll go out on that limb. So that's one issue. And that ties into, I mentioned earlier, during the 21-day review period, we did receive a couple of letters. The primary concerns of the residents who were notified was ultimately, what is the intended use of this site if these improvements go in? Who are the user groups that this is meant for? And the concerns are really tied to, are people going to be fishing off of the property or off of the observation deck? Are people going to use this as an opportunity for access to the water, either to swim or to launch a kayak, a canoe, some other non-motorized boat? Is it going to be used as a picnicking site, as a camping site? Ultimately, the one letter we did receive with the most comments was looking for either some use restrictions or some prohibitions that would narrow down the focus of how this site would and could be used. And I mentioned that Point 7 and 8, to me, really tie in together. One concern we would have is that if it is intended to launch kayaks or non-motorized boats of some sort, or if the Land Conservancy is going to allow that or promote it, we're not talking about a situation where I think we've gone from a more passive site to a bit of an active site, and we've also gone from more than likely pedestrians and bicyclists accessing the site while they're already out to potentially attracting more vehicles. And as I mentioned, there's no parking in this particular area, at least no convenient parking. And if people are bringing their kayaks up and trying to launch from this site, they're likely to park on those residential roadways, which, again, I understand to be perfectly legit. However, those vehicles could very well be there for long durations if somebody is out on a kayak ride around the township. I mean, they could be out all day. They could be all over the place. And it just is a, depending upon the use, I think, really will dictate how this site can or should function, and in my opinion, I think that that will dictate whether or not the site will technically function properly without causing undue or adverse impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. And as shown, and I think you're all well aware of this, but obviously, you know, the immediately adjacent parcels across the street, north and south, are all developed with detached single-family residences. So this is an established neighborhood, and obviously, whatever occurs on this site does have the potential to impact those residents. Ms. Chair, that's all I have at this time. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Let's find out if there are any questions or comments, or questions first for Brian on what he's presented to us on the Commission. Okay, seeing no questions? Oh, no, go ahead. Jay, you have it.
One point of clarification.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the 25-foot setback in the wetlands. That would also apply to the water, correct?
In this instance, it does not. The trick of the natural feature setback, and I apologize for not clarifying that, the natural feature setback applies to structures that are not permitted as waterfront structures, if that makes sense. If it's a structure that is not covered by Article 17, then it falls into the natural feature setback category. So a dock, and in this case, we viewed the observation deck as, essentially, as an allowable waterfront structure, as opposed to going the other direction and saying that it was required to meet the natural feature setback.
And the woodchip trail?
The woodchip trail is the one issue where we did bring up that we feel.
And also within 25 feet of the waterway, isn't it?
It would be, eh, possibly, yes. Yeah, that's a good point. I had viewed it more, the wetland was my bigger concern, but I understand where you're coming from. I guess, just to make sure the record's 100% accurate, if you were, if you're going to consider approval, I would incorporate, you know, authorization of the woodchip trail encroaching into the 25-foot natural feature setback. If we keep it general statement, if you're okay with that, applies to the wetland and then potentially, as it may, apply to the shoreline as well.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure.
Sure. Well, absolutely. It's a great point of clarification. Thank you.
Any other comments specifically for Brian?
Yes, I have some.
Sure.
So to reiterate, as submitted, there was no use restrictions on the property as far as no fishing or kayak launching or things of that nature?
I have not seen anything. I believe the applicant intends to present you with something tonight. They do have a presentation when I'm done, and it's my hope that they will address that as soon as they get their opportunity.
And was there any regard to the maintenance of facilities, and whose responsibility would that be? Would that be the Conservancy, or was it clarified at all, or would some of that responsibility rely, be by the township itself?
As far as I'm concerned, all of the maintenance responsibility would be on the Land Conservancy.
Okay.
It's their property. It's not township-owned property. It's their project, their property, so I would envision that they are responsible for all of it.
And was there any details on the woodchip trail, on the composition of it, or any improvements that we've done to the base, or things of that nature to make it more stable?
I don't recall anything that's overly detailed, no. I think it's pretty much just described as a woodchip trail. So obviously, we're assuming they'd have to do some clearing of the actual area to lay down the woodchips, but how much, you know, how much work that actually entails, if there are, if there's grading that needs to occur, at this point, at least, I don't have that detail. I'm sure the applicant can address that better.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments for Brian? Okay, thank you, Brian. We'll hear from the applicant now, and hopefully, he didn't go out on too far a limb with Chief Porserelli, because I hear there might be a parking ticket on your windshield.
There probably is. I probably parked across the lines. Let me just make sure technically we're working here. Of course not. Liz, do you want the PowerPoint first?
Yes, please.
Okay, once again, guys, bear with us, sorry.
Liz Hugo, if you would, please introduce yourself and give us your name and address, full name.
Sure. Liz Hugo, and address, 29797 East River Road, and I am currently President of the Groceal Nature and Land Conservancy. Doug Thiel is our project manager. He couldn't be with us tonight. Is that it? Go ahead. Oh, okay, would that work? All right, well, while we're waiting, trying to get this going. Could you step on for a second? Yeah.
Yes, let me, please, welcome.
Yeah, I just wanted to address the parking issue, because I believe that our former Vice President, Pat Selby, had discussed the parking issue with Chief Porserelli, going back maybe 2 or even 3 years ago, and it sounded like it was permissible to park on Meridian, at least we do periodically.
Well, let's.
At least north of Bridge. Is that correct, or?
No, actually not.
Okay.
Okay, timeout here. Let me introduce Chief Porserelli. We're very grateful to have you here tonight, sir. We appreciate your input.
Good evening.
And if you might talk about 2 topics, please. One being the parking, okay, which was a lot of concern, but the second being the maintenance of security and enforcement.
Okay. First off, on the parking issue, so that people understand, many years ago, that road was paved. It was a gravel road, and the county, for some reason, when they took down the speed limit signs, they didn't put them up for about a year. The problem with that end of Meridian is that it is actually 35 miles an hour. I requested it to be 30. They wanted to keep it at 35, and I asked them if they could put the signs back up, but can we get it marked down, because it's somewhat of a residential area? And what I explained is, just because it's somewhat residential, it still doesn't qualify for on-road parking as a subdivision would. If you look at the streets like Voight, Annette, anything up there, Cardinal, Heron, anything in a subdivision, if you notice, there's no signs that say no parking. Every subdivision starts with parking in Wayne County, and then if they deem a problem, then they will put it, you know, they'll have engineers come out there and try to understand if they should put no parking for that area. But just keep in mind, any 25 mile an hour speed limit in a subdivision, which is prima facia, the speed limit signs aren't there, and you can park there, because this is not a 25 mile an hour zone, although when you look at it, and I don't get so far in-depth in this, to know what it is, if it's a subdivision status, or what its rating is for Groceal, but when it comes to Wayne County roads, just remember, it's not 25. If it's not 25, you can't impede vehicles by parking on the street. You could have a street right next to it, Voight, Annette, and you can park on that street. street, and it's not impeding traffic as long as there is enough room for the largest or widest vehicle in your public service department or your public safety department to get through. So, what that means basically is, no, unfortunately, there is not on-street parking on Meridian Road anywhere on Groseal. So, in that instance, they would have to come up with something, or as Brian stated earlier, that's up to you if, when you allow something, if they can go park on the roads next to it because it is a 25 mile an hour zone. You will not see any no parking signs on those subdivision roads, but it's up to you to figure out, is that what you want to do? That's not my opinion, that's just the law. That's the legal issue I give you, and then you come up with the rest. The second question that was posed to me was the safety and security issue of any trail that we have. One of the reasons that we have a motorcycle patrol in the summertime is this motorcycle gets in all the areas of Groseal that obviously we can't bring a car to. One is the ferry road trails, the other is the soccer, that new soccer trail that goes from Meridian School, I call it soccer trail, the trail that goes from Meridian School to the back of the soccer fields, and the playscape. There's all areas. And what we do is, we have our, they're called motor officers, we have them check these areas on every shift, and that, they're called our special attention checks. So, if you set up and allow this trail to be up there and you feel that it could be a, you know, they could congregate up there, or kids could find this place, or whatever you feel, we will just add this to our list anyway. And every day that that motorcycle's out, in the summer it is out, every day we have it, sometimes on days and afternoons, we will hit that trail with special attention checks. So, I don't see a big issue, especially because of where it's at. You have the playscape on McComb Street, and that's somewhat of a separate issue because it's, it's very easy to get to. You know, the kids hang out on McComb Street, they go to Savon's, whatever, you know, they go to Starbucks, they get a coffee, then they go back there. This is a little different. Anybody that's going there, I mean, you've got a purpose there, it's, you've got to get there. That's a little different. Plus, I noticed, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but when I was looking at the plans, it is this fairly straight line to the water, which makes it a lot easier for us, obviously, and to get the motorcycle back there. And we can drive the motorcycle on any trails, even on the dirt trails we do. I know you said this would be chips or whatever. You figure out it's going to be. I don't see a problem with us patrolling that area also. And if it becomes a problem, then we, we'll do what's necessary to look at those problems, and we kind of call, we'll give you a little more police service on that trail if there's kids back there. So, I don't see an issue with that. But again, on the first one, unfortunately, there is no parking on a Wayne County road that's above 25 miles an hour on Groseal in that type of situation. If you notice, all West River and East River is marked. Meridian is actually, there's a traffic control order for the entire Meridian from the intersection of Park Lane on the very north end, all the way down to Grow. You may not see a sign here and there, but there is no. Now, we do allow here and there, you know, when people have a party or a function or whatever, they ask, can we park on the roadside? Sure you can. I mean, we're not going to take away people's, you know, functions like that. But when it comes to an everyday issue, and they do impede the travel lane of the roadway, unfortunately, because of that speed limit up there, that it is not allowed. So, that's just a simple answer to that.
Thank you, Chief. Much appreciated.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Hugo.
Okay, will we start now, or you're going to do from there?
I thought you were going to use the over again.
Oh, okay, good. I can do that. Okay, so this is pretty much what I said already, introducing myself.
We have a hand microphone there at your-
Oh, okay, great. Yeah, I did want to point out one thing. You can see, I made a note already on this, now thinking I was going to use it. I wanted to point out that Mickey is actually not an officer, so you might want to correct that in your notes. She's not an officer of the conservancy, she's actually just a board member, one of 19. Okay. Is there a way to zoom in a little bit on that? Just one more thing. Okay, so, the property actually consists of two lots, as mentioned, that were actually donated to BASF, to the conservancy back in 1995. That was around the same time that a lot of development was going on in that area. You've seen where it's located. It's about 1.5 acres in size, and there is the mixed habitat with marsh-like areas. The area in the center is basically a drainage swale, so that was why we wanted to put a boardwalk over that area. So, this property basically provides access to Hanipin Marsh, which the conservancy also owns. It's about 121 acres up and down, adjacent to all the homeowners, north of Bridge, along Meridian. So, the conservancy has been envisioning this project for some time. Going back to October 2010, we actually applied for a grant to treat the phragmities on the property. Over the 10 prior years, we had been, as volunteers, basically trying to control the phragmities on the property, but they had basically been just too much for us to bear, so we actually asked for funds to do professional treatment. So, we did treat with a herbicide back in October 2010, and in May of 2011, we did a prescribed burn. That was paid for by a freshwater future grant. Now, I do want to mention, because this will come up later in case I forget, that after controlling the phragmities in this manner, this is considered a best practice, that we were advised by many professional biologists that we could expect for native plants to come up once the phragmities were gone. We haven't actually seen that happen yet, but we're still hoping, and if they don't come up, we'll be planting in those areas. We have been doing major cleanups on the property, spring of last year and other times as well. We've been continuing with some spot herbicide treatment conducted in the fall of both 2011 and 2012 to further control the phragmities, which are coming up much less dense, but they still need to be controlled. So, the purpose of the next phase of our project is to provide passive recreational opportunities for local residents. We want to provide environmental, educational opportunities, and we want to showcase best practices for the wetland protection, as I mentioned, use of native plants. So, actually, the plan is to consist of a somewhat winding trail. It's really not totally a straight-through shot because we are avoiding some larger trees, but at least going through the middle wetland area, it's a straight boardwalk going through. The trail will continue after the boardwalk and ends a wildlife observation deck overlooking the Hanipin Marsh, which I should point out is one of the probably three major areas around Groseal and the downriver area for fish spawning and wildlife. It's a very, very important part. We have the conservation crescent on the south end, and then we have the Hanipin Marsh on the north end. I'd like to mention that BASF is exploring ways to fund $5,000 or thereabouts towards the total project cost. They basically have agreed to provide us with materials. The design of the boardwalk and the observation deck was completed free of charge. We basically had F&amp;J, that's Frank and Joe Susan. Frank is a civil engineer working with a BASF engineer to design the construction, the So, as mentioned, we received our permits, and the project is budgeted for this year. We have a construction bid obtained from F&amp;J Development. That was basically about $14,000 minus the donated materials, which actually is probably more about $7,000. Although those details aren't important to you, I guess I'm just recognizing the donation. In response to some of the concerns, I guess I wanted to mention that a bike rack could be provided by the conservancy as part of the project if required, as well as a trash receptacle. We didn't plan those things in initially, but we certainly could if it was required. There will be no trees removed during the construction of this project, although I do have to note that there is one dead ash tree that we noticed recently that will need to come down. It's somewhat close to where the walkway is, and so it just seems prudent to remove it before construction. We want to note that a conservancy board member, and we also have many conservancy members who live in the area, who I'm sure will be visiting the property, and we will basically be periodically checking to ensure that there are no problems. Of course, if there are problems which require immediate police attention, you know, if there are issues with vandalism or teenage partying, I mean, I would expect the neighbors, just like any other property, I would expect the neighbors to notify the police and take care of that. A property you sign will be posted by the conservancy, which will address use restrictions such as the hours of access, no swimming, fishing or camping, no launching or docking of motorized boats, no open fires, no picnicking. I did want to mention that, or point out again, that the observation deck is actually about 50 feet from the shoreline, so it would be difficult to really fish from the observation And just going back to a picture of the property, you can see that all the brown area basically is where the phragmities were, it's the marsh area, and essentially, we expect that to be vegetated over time, not with phragmities, but with cattails and other native vegetation. So, it shouldn't really, there shouldn't really necessarily be access for kayaks or canoes So, our next steps are basically approval from the planning commission, building permit from Groseal Township, and obtaining materials from BASF. We would basically wait for a dry period for construction. Basically, this reviews some of the proposed visitor use restrictions. I think I covered everything in the slide, but I'll leave that up. Can you guys read that?
Needs to be a little bit bigger.
Without glasses, I'm not, yeah. So, this would be similar, I believe, to maybe what we have at the Parkway Waterfront Park.
So, basically, the first one is hours of operation dusted on.
Correct.
Second one is no alcoholic beverages or bottled glass. Third, no picnicking or swimming. Then boaters, camping, fishing, et cetera, is all banned. Dogs are permitted while on a leash, no longer than six feet. Do not litter, dispose of any refuse in the litter barrel, provided, and no feeding of wildlife or removal of wildflowers. Penalty. Chapter 1, Article 2, municipal code of infraction. Not sure what that is, but-
Yeah, Doug put this together, so I'm assuming that's correct.
Okay. I don't know that the police would be enforcing these kind of regulations.
Well, for those that are pertinent, I guess. Such as the fires.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't answer, go into details on this. And of course, this is a work in progress to try to address the issues that Brian had come up with. Okay, I do have the sketch plans. I don't know if I need to put them up. I guess I would open for questions at this point.
Well, before we get to questions, we're going to go to the public.
Oh, okay.
So, if you would, just kind of wait to the side there, and let's see if anybody's got any questions or comments from the audience regarding this application. Anyone wish to speak about this application? If so, please raise your hand. Ah, sir. Come on up.
Peter Cant, 22119 West River. I live approximately, I'd say, two and a half miles south of this site, and I live on the water, on West River. I just want to say, this is a great opportunity for the public to have viewing access of one of our financial resources, so I am fully in agreement with this proposal, and I think it deserves your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krantz. Other hands? Yes, come on up.
Cheryl Hurt, 17975 Cardinal. I'm actually within 500 feet of this piece of property, and while we are definitely looking forward to having access to that nature area and will likely use it, our primary concern remains parking in our neighborhood. And we have, at times, for things that have happened closer to us, had our street entirely blocked by parking, to the point where we and our neighbors can't get out of our driveway. So, I would just ask for additional consideration given to parking areas and how people will access this piece of property. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mickey.
Mickey Bartlett, 8949 Voight. I fully support it. The Nature Conservancy recently just put on a class for bird watching, just an initial class, and I took my son and my daughter to it. And the idea is, is it's just kind of an expansion of that, where you can take your kids or your family and go out and just appreciate the wildlife. The thought isn't for a rowdy bunch. I mean, if you're going to watch birds, you don't want to make a lot of noise, right? And so, it's really just to appreciate it, probably to ride bikes there, or if you're close enough to walk there. Again, it's just, just a nice place to visit with your family, so I do support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments from the audience? Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the table, and let's go down and start with Jim. Jim, questions, comments, opinions?
I had a question. Can she come back?
Yes, come on up again, Liz. Please.
Just a couple of quick questions. How are you?
Good. Actually, there were two other things I wanted to mention, but we can talk about them when they probably come up with the parking and the woodchips. With the parking situation, I guess at some points, it was mentioned about that we want, that we should maybe consider putting in parking spots, and we didn't really feel that that was what we wanted to do because this is really considered more as a neighborhood access, as we mentioned, walkers and bicyclists. It's a relatively small property. I think you don't want 10 or 20 people there at a time. I mean, you would, you know, just have neighborhood people, basically. We wouldn't expect a lot of people. It's not really a destination spot, I guess. So, certainly, we will be parking on Annette, I guess, for future. The others are woodchip trails, and I don't think, we've already put some down a little bit in one section, basically not really close to the road, but just to try and define, the woodchips are meant more to define the trail so that it would keep people off of the more sensitive areas because we do have some more special or native vegetation growing in the area that we might want to highlight with signs, and we don't want people necessarily to be running all over the property. So, I mean, I don't think any of us feel strongly about woodchips and having them at the location. I think any restrictions on that would be fine. It's more, again, to kind of define the pathway. Okay.
Great, thank you. Couple of quick questions. It's not page 7 on mine, but when you talk about the launching of boats, it says motorized boats. It doesn't just say any boats. So, kayaks aren't prohibited at this point in time per the sign? Is that how you want it to read, or is it-
Yeah, I guess we haven't really discussed that. Motorboats for sure would be prohibited, and I'm just thinking that it's not really a place where you could have easy access because, again, we want to re-vegetate that shoreline, that wetland area, the wetland area between the shoreline and the observation deck. So, I don't think we want necessarily people traipsing through there, so I guess I don't necessarily object to restrictions, and hopefully, my conservancy colleagues will agree with me. But basically, that was my opinion. But so, yeah, I don't think we would prohibit them. You know, sometimes even if you have the wetland, you'll still have like a deer trail maybe going through, so I could envision some people using it, but again, it's like 150, no, 300 feet from the road, so, you know, I guess, yeah, there are little carts you can- there are little carts you can bring your kayak with. But yeah, if someone's gonna go through that and out of trouble, you know, I guess I wouldn't necessarily object, but it's not really intended for that.
And I do have a concern about parking. I actually drove down to the site today on my way here, left a little early, checked it out. Not a whole lot of parking, and of course, I took West River to come back here, and you get to the end of Highland, which is a fishing point, lookout point. I think it's private, actually, at this point in time, but of course, there's three cars parked on West River Road, and there's people fishing off of the end of Highland. And it just, you always, what we intend things to be on the island is one thing, and what they end up becoming is another thing, and so I just wanna be cautious and put everything in a place that we can to make sure that the place isn't with the neighborhood and whatnot. I would just hate to have it go in the wrong direction. And it was, you know, of course, I've driven right past Highland, and that was my example on the way here, so I just wanna make sure that we can do, if this is something that we wanna move forward with, everything that we can to make it as nice a place as it can be, so.
Yeah, and if we say no fishing on our property, maybe we have to just open up some of those Wayne County road ends for people to do their fishing. But yeah, I would think that if we say there's no fishing, are we entitled to use police to control that? I'm not sure. I mean, it's our pri- it's our conservancy property, but it's open to the public, so it's kind of in a little bit of a gray area in terms of enforcement, and I don't know if Chief Porcello wants to address that at all.
Please.
Sure, if there's any rules that come up, or any issues that come up in an area, it's the same thing as any other township-owned property or private property owner asking, you know, the curfew on it. I'm not sure how far in depth we'd get into it, but we certainly can address it. We can help you out. We're not gonna let, if it says no fishing, if it says no fires, if it says no anything, we'll weaken it. It's because it's private property, and we, all we need is a letter from them stating that they would like the ordinance of Grozeal enforced, then it's enforceable by us. But, you know, flower picking, like she said, I'm not quite sure we know it's... Know what's what there, but it's those three-leaf ones we don't like, but besides that, we'll help you out any way we can. If there's, if there's an issue, we'll, we'll address it. So that's, that's not a problem us.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Jim, additional comments? Brian?
Well, really, the only issue that I have is the parking, and we've discussed that quite a bit, so I won't add to that.
Okay, thank you, Ann.
But now, is it possible to get a no parking sign from Wayne County to put up there? That seems like it might be a logical thing.
Chief?
If Wayne County says we can't have parking on those roads.
If it becomes a problem, yeah, we can do that. We can, if you'd like a no parking sign up there, that's no problem. One of the reasons, if I can just go back real quick, is that a lot of the times, there is enough room on the shoulder of the road, and that's where we okay people to park in no parking areas. There's not even enough room. I don't know, Jim, if you saw. There's not, I mean, you can't even get somebody over there, you know, without going sliding in that ditch there, down a little bit. I mean, there just is no room anywhere there, so if it becomes a problem, yes, we can do that. We can petition the county for a sign saying, you know, we have an abundant number of people going there, that, you know, coming there with cars, sure, we can do something like that, to make sure, we help the neighborhood out, is basically what we're doing for you. So again, we can address that.
Thank you. Brian?
All right, well, I have two viewpoints here. One is, you know, my advocacy, or, you know, as a Grozeal resident, view of this, as well as I have my planning perspectives on this. So I'll start off with my advocacy side and say that, you know, I'm, you know, I love the idea of the project. I think that it's great that there's passive recreational opportunities on Grozeal. I think that's kind of what makes Grozeal what it is. You know, we have this unique gift of water, and it's something that you can't get anywhere else. But yet, you know, there isn't that much water access, you know, public water access within the island. I mean, from what I've heard, Canton, Michigan actually has more waterfront parks than Grozeal does. So in that case, you know, I think it's a great opportunity. But, you know, from the planning perspective, I'd say that I would highly encourage, you know, multiple bike racks to be installed in that area, because, you know, there's gonna be people that are go there, especially a family, so there'll be multiple bikes at once. I would say that inverted U-style bike rack is actually good, because it can attach to two points, helps keep a bicycle standing up, and you can use both sides of that. So if you put in two or three of those, you can get, you know, one, one and a half families, you know, access to the property at once, especially if we're not gonna be providing parking spots. We're basically gonna be trying to encourage people to come by foot or by cycling. Another issue is about the trail surface. I, you know, I just wanna make sure that is ADA accessible. I understand, you know, by no means am I saying that this needs to be a paved path of sorts, but there is, you know, ways of using specific types of materials and making sure that the base is compacted, so that way, if you're in a wheelchair or something that's heavier, that has, you know, smaller footprint on the ground, you know, because of the smaller wheels, you're not gonna sink into the surface. So that way, we're providing opportunities for everyone on the island, not just those that are able-bodied. As far as kayaking...
Let's stop at that point. Okay, please comment on ADA access.
Well, because some of the areas may be a little bit wet at some points of the year, I guess I would possibly recommend not having ADA accessibility. Now, we did talk about making it wide enough for that, so, you know, at certain times of the year, certainly it would be accessible and dry enough.
As far as the maintenance of the trail and things, making sure that it, you know, if you put it down on day one, it might be great, but a year from now, you know, drainage just comes, you know, waters come through and it's basically wipes some of the woodchips out, is there gonna be ongoing maintenance to make sure that there's a defined path and that, you know, extra woodchips are added and things of that nature, so that way, if it sinks over time, it's basically creating a base, so that way, you know, you can add more woodchips on top and, you know, be less likely to sink in.
Yeah, certainly, we're going to be maintaining the property into perpetuity, I guess. When we receive properties, whether donated or have conservation easements on properties, this is for the long term, so, yeah, we do want people to use the property, and so we're going to keep it maintained and, and safe as, as well as we can. I mean, not to say that, you know, a tree could come down two days after we do our spring cleaning and everything, but, you know, we hopefully have someone notifying of that, notifying us of that situation.
Okay. And, you know, just to clarify, there is no use of, you know, public township funds for this property, and so there's no affiliation essentially with the township on this specific property?
Correct.
Okay. That satisfies that, my point on the trail, but I do have some other thing, other comments?
Please.
Okay?
Yes.
As far as kayaking, I'm a kayaker myself. I do have access from my backyard, but I know that I've got a seventeen-foot-long kayak, and I'm not gonna wanna walk down this trail with that, or even put, you know, drive in my car if I didn't have access, you know, from my backyard to one of these streets, get a trailer and haul it down that way. So I, I agree with Liz that I don't think this would be the, you know, a prime spot for people to be kayaking, especially since there's going to be access at the water's edge, and there's still access at Elizabeth Park, and of course, we all know that there's informal spots that people go already. I was wondering about the definition of picnic and how that will be enforced, so if, you know, a person walks to the end, you know, is enjoying their view and pulls out a candy bar, or, you know, has a light snack or something like, is that considered picnicking? Or is it when you're, you know, what's the, what's the line there?
I guess I think of it as putting down a blanket in an area. So, yeah, you know, as I mentioned, we have areas where there are wildflowers, for example, so someone coming along and putting down a blanket and, yeah, having a basket of food and staying there for hours, that's not really what it's intended for.
Okay. The issue about docking of non-motorized boats, Jim already brought that up, but, and it doesn't seem to be that there's, you know, a lot of controversy around this project, but, you know, having, you know, photos of the view sheds of, you know, what the opportunity that people are gonna be looking at versus, you know, viewpoints from neighboring properties and from the road, you know, that, that always helps, at least in my opinion, you know, trying to figure out if this is gonna be an undue burden on surrounding neighborhoods. But again, it might be a non-issue. But as far as enforcement, enforcement, I think that it's fine the way it is, but if there was an issue township-wide about, you know, these, these parks, that, you know, maybe there's opportunities to create some sort of community watch program, or to get, you know, people that are cycling or walking more often, you know, to somehow relay that to, you know, our community policing force and things of that nature. But I also wanted, in your comment, about future parking considerations, and why, again, I don't think that it'll be an issue about parking. I didn't know if you guys had sort of a plan B in case there was, you know, this proved to be such a popular spot that people were parking all the time, was there an opportunity in the future to create some off-street parking?
I guess it could be, yeah. I guess it could be considered, but we're not at this point, again, because I'm stressing, it's a small site. I mean, if you, I can't imagine that you'd have, you know, carloads of people wanting to use at the same time, at least I wouldn't. If there are a lot of people there, I don't necessarily wanna come in with nature with twenty other people.
Yeah, but, but there is the opportunity for that. There, there's enough space for you to provide parking if it needed to be in the future.
I guess so.
Okay. Any other option, other comment about future parking was, maybe the chief could answer this one, but about putting time limits on parking on the residential street, so that way you don't have somebody, you know, bringing their, their car and their trailer and staying there all day. I mean, it's highly unlikely, but in the case that there was, if there was a time limit in, say, you know, an hour, two hours, or something, something like that, it would prohibit those worst-case scenarios where somebody comes and, you know, uses that spot to kayak all the way around the island for the entire day.
Chief, would you care to comment on that? Well, you're getting your exercise out here. Should've sat in the middle. Okay.
The only issue with that, Brian, is, say I live on Voight Street, and I have a friend over, and they park in front of my house, I can't discern if that's a kayaker or a friend, and, and I would not, I, I don't know, I'm not sure that would be the way to handle it, actually, 'cause you can't really discern who's her, you know, who's who there. And now you're given, you know, that you have a friend come over and you can't park near my house just because I live near the corner, let's say, and, or on a net or anything else. It's very difficult to enforce that, not only on, on being fair, but figuring out who's who. So...
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
That's it.
That's it, Brian? Thank you very much.
Sure, on the surface, it seems pretty cut and dry. It's, it's really falling in the lines of, like, a pocket park, which is not only allowed by right, but it's also encouraged in our master plan. I do have a couple of areas of concern, though, where this is, you know, boat launches are not, you know, allowed by right, they're special land uses. Pocket parks are, I have no problem with the pocket, with the pocket park aspect of this, and I think it's actually a very commendable project. Brian, the question I do have is, is what happens if this is approved as a park tonight, and then two years down the road, it becomes a popular kayak launch? And what, I mean, you, is there a recite plan use, or how does, what happens?
For starters, I'm not sure if this is working, but for starters, if, if you were to consider approval tonight, I would suggest you incorporate the list of use restrictions that have been provided, volunteered essentially, by the applicant, and if non-motorized is added to that list, as I suspect you are requiring or would like to see, then that's essentially your enforcement tool. If people start using the site for launching kayaks, they are in violation of their approval at that point. If they wanted to add it or amend that particular condition of approval, they would have to come back before you and present the new project or the new plan at that time.
What if it was the other way around? What if we approved this as a park tonight without any restrictions, assuming that it's gonna be fine, and then two years from now, it's not fine?
I don't know that I would suggest you do that. You don't have to listen to me, but I, again, it may not be the most convenient site to launch a non-motorized boat from, but that doesn't mean that people wouldn't do it. I, I think there are some, some legit concerns that were presented by the neighbors. I think they present themselves in a planning and zoning fashion as well, and I, I really think that incorporating the list of use restrictions that were prepared by the applicant, I think, is an important concept of this project. I don't know if that answers the full question or not, but that's, that's my thought.
Yeah, and if I could comment, there would be a potential kayak launch just about half a mile to maybe three-quarters of a mile up the road at the road end of, is it Harbor something or other? I can't remember off the top of my, Harbor Point. Right, there's a road end there, then if people really wanna get in the water at that point, you know, and they don't wanna go to Elizabeth Park across the way, and they don't wanna go to Water's Edge down the road a bit, or the waterfront park, or one of the other options, then, yeah, I, I don't see that this, this could become really a popular place for launching kayaks. I'd also like to note that people generally tend to prefer kayaking on the south end of the island, more so than the north end, so there, if you tell them they have to put their boat in way at the north end, they, I don't know, look for another possibility.
Thank you. Eric?
That's it for me.
Mr. Fuji?
I'm glad to go last, because most of my issues have been covered. I, I didn't hear, but I think it's implied that the, these use requirements would be posted somewhere on a sign.
Yes, that was the plan.
Okay. And I think, building on what Eric and Brian were saying, I would be in support of those use restrictions being for all motor, all watercraft, motorized and non, however that would be worded. 'Cause I, you know, I hear what you're saying, but I, I've seen the resourcefulness of people who wanna get their boat in the water, where they wanna get it in the water, and, you know, as Eric said, if that's not a restriction now, and it becomes a use, now we've got an enforcement issue on something that we never restricted, and, and if, if there's no intent that it's used for that purpose, I think for the reason you stated, which is it'd be potentially damaging to the, to the flora, you know, I think we would, we would kind of be in, that's, looking for the same thing, and I think we'd be looking for that sort of restriction. With that, I, I think it's great. I, you know, support all the principles behind it. I'd love to see this and more of these sorts of things on the island, and I think it gets rid of the parking issue. Somebody's gonna park on a net or one of those for short time to go out there and walk, I don't think that's an unreasonable burden on the neighbors there. If somebody's gonna park a, you know, truck with a trailer and leave it there for several hours where they're out kayaking, that's, that's, to my mind, an unreasonable burden, and I think by making no launch of any type there, I think it satisfies all those concerns, and I'd be a thousand percent in support.
Thank you, Jay. Well, having heard all the comments, basically, I support this plan with the following restrictions. First, you put in trash cans. Second, you put in bike racks, and whether it's one or whether it's two, and how big they are, I don't care, but it needs to be adequate for, for bike use. It should be subject to any Wayne County approval, you know, to put anything, a path in the right of way. There should be no tree cutting, consistent with the Woodlands ordinance. There should be use restrictions, all that you listed, plus kayaking and canoe. I will not support this if you do not restrict and eliminate kayaks and canoes. Not because I'm against that, but because I'm against the parking of, of trailers. So the restrictions you've published, plus non-motorized as well. I would ask that these, these user groups, including the kayak and canoe restrictions, be clearly posted prominently on the site, so that everyone can see. I think that the sign that you put up needs to meet the ordinance requirements of Grozeal, so that's a restriction. The ADA accessible, I think, is an important point, and, and I think you may need to make an honest effort to do that, okay? Now, that doesn't mean putting in paving. What it means is looking at logical things, like, gee, you get at the end of the deck, and, you know, a, a person has, needs to sit down. Is there a place to sit? Okay? Simple things like that, that, that will make a difference for someone who can't move quite as well as somebody else, and so I think you should, you should specifically make an effort to do that. And so I think you should specifically make an effort to do this, and you should, the steps you take should be routed past Brian Borden, our planner, for his validation. So that's a restriction. I think that there should definitely be a letter sent, this is a requirement, that you will send a letter to the police, and the police will therefore have the authority to do the things that will enforce what we all want to be enforced. And then finally, there should be, this is another requirement, go and get the non-parking signs, and get them posted. This is critical. So those 10 or 12 items you do, and you agree to, I will support the project. That's my comments.
Right, yeah, you did mention about no trees. We do have a dead ash tree.
Trees per the Woodland Ordinance don't deal with dead trees, they deal with dead trees, or living trees, okay? So yeah, take down dead trees, that's fine, but living trees, consistent with the Woodland Ordinance, you have to adhere to that ordinance.
Sure, no problem. We are in full favor.
Okay. And I shouldn't, I don't really need to lecture Groceal Nature and I can serve us about the Woodland Ordinance. That's a bit of an overkill. Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I have a question about your comments there?
Please, absolutely.
Particularly with respect to the ADA discussion, what I was prepared to do was make a motion that would incorporate all the things you just said.
Okay.
But I'm not sure what it was that I would be motioning if I said that, so on the ADA. I heard, make an effort, I didn't hear, be in compliance.
No, because I don't think, as you say, you know, if, it's a Woodlands, it's wet, okay? You put down a good trail, you make an honest effort to pack the trail, okay, that helps. You make it wide enough for a wheelchair. You know, maybe it isn't accessible for a narrow wheelchair, but it's accessible for the ones with the wider wheels, okay? You know, it's making sure there aren't any major steps, or things, you know, elevation changes are gradual. You know, I'm just throwing these things out, but, you know, that's the sort of thing that I would like you to document. I don't know what the answer is, because I don't know exactly what the situation is there. But I don't know that I-
I agree with exactly what you're saying. I don't know how we make that part of the motion, other than a request, that they work with our planner to make it as compliant as reasonably possible.
That's, that was the intent. And it's up to you guys to demonstrate that. So he's coming back with a specific plan, to him. Okay?
I move that.
Okay, we have a motion, is there support? Support. We have support from Brian, I'll call a discussion. Here and there, I'll call a question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pos, motion carried. Congratulations, your project is approved with that motion. At this point, we're going to take a five-minute recess. Okay, first a comment about the title, special land use and site plan review. Special land use is really what we're talking about tonight. It is the judgment that this planning commission makes relative to how well the use fits with the neighborhood, essentially. There are six basic criteria in this regard, but they all center around how well this thing fits, okay? And we are only going to pull in specifics of the site plan review, which deals specifically with whether the, how the rowing club meets the compatibility requirements, okay? There was a long litany, folks, that was in your package of site plan materials that Brian Borden provided. We're not going into that tonight, okay? The process that we outlined for the rowing club to move forward was that it was going to be sequential and stepwise. When the planning commission acts on special land use, assuming it is a recommendation, it will go to the board first and then come back to us for a detailed review of the site plan. So, we're not skipping anything. What I'm saying is, is that the information was put in there to make it easier to assess compatibility with the six criteria that Brian will talk about under special land use. You with me on that? Okay? All right. So, I'll get in now to the background. The applicant, the Samakian Associates Architects, 1822 Ford Avenue in Wyandotte. The owner is, of course, the Grosso Rowing Club, PO Box 385, Grosso. The president, Gary Ames, will represent them. The location is a newly created lot that was part of lots three and four of Golf View subdivision. To the normal model, that is actually a 27,000 square foot lot located about 150 feet north of Ferry and West River Road intersection. This is on the southwest corner of West Shore Country Club. And it's actually not on the waterfront side, it's on the east side of the road. So, that's the location. The proposal is to build about a 6,000 square foot building to be used as a boathouse facility to support the Grosso Rowing Club. The facility will be operated by the rowing club to enable and encourage youth and adult rowing as a recreation activity. The zoning under this application is R1E, single-family residential. And under single-family residential standards, a boat club is a special land use. So, the relevant ordinances that we're dealing with, first of all, Article 22, special land use standards, Article 21, site plan review, and Article 3, single-family residential. The process for this review tonight, under special land use standards, is a multiple step one. We hold a public hearing here at the planning commission. The planning commission then analyzes this and makes a recommendation to the board. The board then actually decides on the, the township board decides on the special land use, and then it comes back to the planning commission sometime in the future for the actual detailed review of all the nuts and bolts associated with the site plan-specific development. Tonight, we're at step one, again, the public hearing. The planning commission may or may not vote on this tonight, okay? It's entirely up to the discretion of this commission. If they do vote, it may be an approval, denial, or tabling, depending on the manner in which the planning commission reacts to the information presented. Little background, the rowing club has been in the process of moving through township approvals really quite smoothly. In the fall of 2012, they were here for a concept review meeting where they introduced the whole idea to the planning commission and to the public. In December of 2012, they were back for the first step, which was to create a legal lot, basically a lot split off from the south side of West Shore Country Club, on which they could potentially build this facility. They came to us and they were granted approval first by the zoning board of appeals because the lot size was a little bit undersized relative to the requirements for zoning. They got their variance. They then came in front of the planning commission, they got a positive recommendation from the planning commission. It then moved to the township board where they were subsequently approved as well. So, tonight, they're back again, they have a lot in hand, and they're now coming in looking at the use itself. Now, as I said, this is not a full site plan review, only those elements which enable us to make a decision about the land use are going to be talked about tonight. So, I'll stop at this point. Brian, take it away.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Wonderful introduction, stealing almost all of my presentation yet again. No, I'm just kidding. Again, some of this is redone at this point, but the request before you is special land use approval. Coming with that is eventually will be the need for site plan review and approval as well. The trick, as you've sort of alluded to, Mr. Chairman, is that the two are very much interrelated. There is a lot of overlap across site plan and special land use. And in essence, we need a site plan in order to conduct a thorough special land use review because we need to see the details, we need to know exactly what is being proposed, how it will be designed, and what the potential impacts or effects are in this particular situation. You've already identified our property. This is the subject site right here. The photograph, the aerial photo is oriented such that north is to the left, so east is up in order to give you a better shot of the site and the surroundings. You've already noted the background on this, Mr. Chair, so I'm going to skip past that. By virtue of the lot split, the site is zoned R1E, which is an overlay zoning district. The property was zoned R1A, which in this case it retains to some degree as an underlying zoning district. And really, all that means is that the uses, the host of uses that are allowed in R1A is how we apply or what we apply to this particular site. And as you noted, boat clubs are listed as special land uses. In terms of the pertinent ordinance sections, again, you've reviewed most of these, a quick refresher. 3.3 allows boat clubs as a special land use. 21.1 requires a full site plan review by the commission for all special land uses. 22.3 provides the general special land use standards. These are tied to the potential impacts of the use on elements such as consistency with the master plan, potential impact on adjacent land uses, any impacts or harmful effects on traffic, the environment, and the capacity or the availability of public infrastructure to adequately serve the site. In terms of the special land use component, 22.2 does require a formal public hearing. That hearing was posted, noticed in the paper, and distributed via first-class mail to property owners within 300 feet of the site. And that's really what we're here for tonight, is the public hearing. Following the hearing, as you noted already, Mr. Chair, the commission will be in position to take action. You could either forward your recommendation of approval, a recommendation of denial, approval, or, excuse me, recommendation of approval with conditions, or if by virtue of the comments and questions provided at the public hearing, you may wish to seek additional information and/or answers or responses from the applicant, in which case you might wish to table to the next meeting. We've already discussed the relation with the site plan. It's the stated intent of the commission tonight to proceed with special land use and the public hearing, and that site plan review and approval would not take place tonight. That's well within your rights per the zoning ordinance. This next slide is a quick look at the site plan as proposed. To give you a feel for where this is, this dark gray hatch on the north side of the building, this is the existing West Shore parking lot, right in this area. The proposed building, as noted, just under 6,000 square feet. It includes areas for indoor training, indoor boat storage, as well as separate locker rooms for both boys and girls, slash men and women, however you want to look at that. Part of the project, when we get to it, again, this is maybe more of a site plan detail, but overlaps into special land use in a couple of instances, quite importantly, is the proposal for the water access across West River. There is on the plan, it is shown as a floating dock on the west side of West River. When we get to that point, we're going to need additional details on that. However, as it relates to the special land use, obviously, this is an important consideration, given that we will have people crossing the road to access the water. More on that momentarily. The project also includes a shared parking agreement with West Shore. The project architect provided you with pretty detailed parking calculations in terms of West Shore's activity, the amount of parking available at West Shore, and the expected level of parking activity or need for the rowing club's facility. So, again, they would not at this time, they're not proposing onsite parking, rather, they would share these spaces immediately adjacent to their property. Next slide is a color rendering of the proposed building. This was recently submitted by the applicant. I believe you have it in the dais in front of you tonight. It was distributed. I will certainly let the project architect and applicant speak to details on this. In generalities, it is sort of a split building of masonry and metal siding, and it also has a pitched metal roof, as you can see. Two overhead doors on the West Riverside. This is essentially the boat storage portion, if you look at the floor plan, so obviously easy access in and out. And then two entrances. This entrance, if you can see the cursor here, this would be a sidewalk connection over towards the parking spaces on the West Shore property for access here, and then sidewalk wraps around for a second access point at the front. Review summary, at least an overview of the points in my letter. This was distributed to the applicant and project architect, so they have seen all of the comments that you referenced earlier, Mr. Chair. I'll do my best to not cross over too far into specific site plan details. Some of them do start to head that direction, but I think we'll see where we're going with this shortly. So, first and foremost, I think since day one of this project being brought in for a sort of a conceptual pre-application review, one of the biggest concerns has been safety and the idea of, I won't call them children per se, but younger adults, maybe, middle school, high school age kids, carrying large boats across West River to gain access to the water for their intended purpose. The submittal does include a pretty detailed, what I've referred to as the safety plan, outlining all of the efforts that will be undertaken, both physical site improvements as well as some policy matters in terms of how they will function and operate. We do feel, this probably requires a little bit more discussion tonight, I think ultimately, from my perspective and I believe the commission's perspective, the intent here is to make sure that everything in the applicant's power is being done to make sure we have a safe environment, again, for these participants in the rowing club crossing the road. So, certainly, in my letter, I was looking for some added detail, maybe a little bit more from the applicant in terms of what else can you do, be thinking, be thinking a little bit more. You've done a lot, how much farther can we take this? We really need to make sure we hit this one out of the park on the first try. As a side note, and this will probably come up again anyway, the applicant did work with Chief Porciarelli. Did you stuck with us, chief? Thank you. So, he was able to comment and participate and assist the applicant in the preparation of that safety plan, too. So, I think that was another important aspect of some of our pre-app meetings, was basically asking the applicant to reach out to police and fire and make sure you get their input and do everything in your power. So, I'm under the impression this one's probably going to come up again, so I'm going to move on. My next point has to do, and again, this may seem like it dips over into site plan in terms of building materials, but at the same time, a special land use component is compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. As I noted in my letter, I would like the applicant maybe to talk to you a little bit tonight about the materials they've chosen. I did request that they provide samples for your consideration. Ultimately, my thought process here is that metal roof buildings, metal siding is not a traditional residential material in this community. And I guess I just want to make sure that ultimately, we're getting the best project we can such that it fits in, I think, as you said it upfront, Mr. Chairman. We really need to make sure that this is appropriate for the site, given its surroundings. So, I have asked the applicant to be prepared to discuss that element a little bit more detail. I'm not going to get too much into parking, I think that's more detail-oriented. I did bring it up in this instance in particular. I think the site will probably function okay with the shared parking arrangement, and by okay, I think it will be satisfactory. I shouldn't, okay, may have been underselling it. The biggest thing I think for future consideration is that there is a timeframe within that shared parking agreement. It's a 30-year duration with the ability to renew for, I believe, another 30 years. Granted, that's a really long time. Nonetheless, there is the potential that at some point in the future, that arrangement could expire, and I think we need to at least present it such that the applicant is fully aware, if that expires, they need to provide their own onsite parking. So, more of a site plan detail, but again, making sure this fits in with the neighborhood. I think parking could be an important consideration at some point. Again, kind of keeping in that theme, does not show that well here. I have also asked the applicant, I've seen this material used before. In their plan, they propose a large portion of the front yard is to be what they've identified or referred to as turf stone tarmac. I believe in your package, there is a rendering or a photograph even of what that is intended. Essentially, it's almost like a pervious situation where you've got grass, but there's enough stability and it's surrounded by a little bit of impervious. The photograph, I think, in the resubmittal materials will really show you exactly what they're planning for on that. But again, that was something where, based on the site plan, based on the fact, we really haven't seen use of this type of material in the township, I wanted to make sure the applicant was prepared to further discuss that with you tonight as well. Almost a question, as much as anything I had noted in my review letter, is trying to take a step back to the bigger picture of the township's non-motorized plan. I don't believe there are sidewalks in this area, and I'm not sure if they're intended or not. I know we do have a couple planning commissioners who are on the non-motorized committee, and I wanted to at least bring that up tonight because, again, this is, part of our special use review has to do with the adequacy of public facilities and infrastructure. I view sidewalks as a potentially very important public facility or infrastructure. So, wanted to at least bring it up for discussion. If it is planned for in the future, I think we will want to address that in all likelihood at the site plan component, but again, there's overlap there as well. The detailed items, again, for the most part, you could view these as site plan elements, but the fencing proposal is part of the buffering requirement between the proposed building and the adjacent residence to the south. So, again, you can see where there's some overlap. It's a specific standard, a specific detail tied to the site plan. However, we want to make sure that it's adequate such that we're demonstrating compatibility with adjacent properties in the character of the area. The other items, again, these are probably more lighting, the dock, refuse removal, all elements where we need a little bit of additional information. I believe most of these have been addressed in some of the resubmittal materials, but I think these are pertinent for our discussion tonight. Closing points are simply that, obviously, any concerns or issues raised by township engineer, police, fire, will have to be addressed, particularly, again, as we focus on our special land use standards, particularly as it relates to public infrastructure and public health, safety, and welfare. And I think that ties back again, obviously, to the safety plan, which is probably the biggest focus tonight. Ultimately, if this gets approved, if there are any outside permits that are needed, they'll have to obtain that. More of a site plan comment. And then strictly a site plan comment is, they are proposing to protect and preserve a number of mature trees. They do comply with your Woodlands ordinance, at least as submitted at this point, and we just want to make sure that before a shovel goes in the ground, that proper tree protection fencing is installed such that we make sure that those trees are not harmed in any way. Again, more of a site plan, but also tied to protection and compatibility with environmental features. So, a lot of overlap amongst the two sets of review standards. So, with that, Mr. Chair, that's all I have at this time. Happy to take any questions.
Questions at this point for Mr. Borden. Okay, hearing none? Thank you, Brian, as usual.
You're welcome.
A very excellent job. Okay, let's, the process we're going to follow now, we're going to hear from the applicant, okay? He's going to give us a summary of the major elements, okay? And then we're going to stop, we're going to go to the public. We're going to have a public hearing, we're going to take input. So, after the project is again introduced, some of the major points hit on, we'll go to the public, and then we'll bring it back to the table, and from there, we'll get in some detailed discussions about some very specific elements that Brian has raised. Come on up, please. Welcome.
Good evening. Eric Plesson, 8265 Thorn Tree Court. As a point of order, what I would suggest with your approval is that I introduce the architect who can address some of these design issues, and then, once he's done, I know the discussion is going to focus more on the safety and, to a lesser degree, parking. I'd like to wait until he's done and satisfied you on those other design issues, and then we'll address that.
Okay, works for me.
Very well, thank you.
Good suggestion. Yes, sir, welcome. Your name and address, please.
My name is Dan Boggs. I'm with Samakian Associates Architects.
Dan.
Dan Boggs.
Boggs, okay, got it.
1822 Ford Avenue. Brian covered most of the points, but a few things that I wanted to point out. One is the proposed boat club is currently is adjacent to a commercial function, and there's a residential function on the south side. Being that it's bordering a residential function, we have provided the required buffer zone, which actually consists of a retaining wall due to the grade changes between the site we're developing and the neighboring residential property. Besides that three-foot retaining wall, there's also going to be a six-foot fence, which is one of the components of the buffer. And then behind that fence is the required landscaping that's for the buffer. If you notice, within the calculations for landscaping, we do not propose to remove any of the existing trees. All of the mature trees, except for maybe some missing, small ones and the brush groups, will remain. We have subtracted from the landscape calculations a few trees from those calculations, but there's still several, still quite a few trees being added. Also, at the front of the site, within the green belt, we've added the required trees, but you may have noticed that they're pushed off to the two corners. Basically, our intent there was to try to keep the sightlines as clear as possible for the safety of the kids carrying the boats across the street. Also, let me...
Could you back up for a second and show us again the fence? Where the fence is at, and where is this three-foot wall?
Fence is at the bottom of your screen, or the south side of the site here. This is the fence rail on here.
Okay, and that's the six-foot fence?
Yes.
Okay, where's this three-foot retaining wall?
The retaining wall is just slightly north of it. Basically, the fence doesn't sit directly on the wall, it's slightly north. And again, that's just to deal with, around the center of the site here, there's about a three-foot grade difference between the development site and neighboring residential property.
Okay, which is higher? I can't read this.
The residential property is higher. And part of the reasoning of having this retaining wall is for we can create a flat space here between the property line and where the fence is. Basically, the club is allowed an easement here for the neighbor and residential house, they have access to their backyard.
Okay, and the fence, the fence is right where the arrow is now?
Yeah, the fence goes all along here.
So, that respects the easement, essentially, is what you're saying?
Yes, it goes along the easement. The buffer is actually, you can see this dash line here closer to the building, the buffer is actually 20 foot wide, and it's very close to the building over here.
How far away is the three-foot retaining wall from that fence?
It's basically right, it's basically right adjacent to it, within one foot of the fence.
Okay, so the trees are all planted at the same grade as the main building?
Yes.
Okay. How far does that three-foot wall run toward the road?
On the three-foot wall, it runs, trying to adjust your mouse, doesn't quite move that far. It runs about this point here where my mouse is. Actually, on this drawing CE1, which was included in the package, it's clearly on there, it's not shown as clear on this drawing.
Yeah, I was unclear on that. Okay, so the three-foot, the three-foot runs to the front, and how does it disappear?
And one thing that's important, too, is the retaining wall, it's zero at both ends and three foot in the center. It's not an entire three foot. It's basically just taking care of the grade as necessary for the grade changes, and also to create that easement that allows a car to drive, a car or truck to drive through that easement. If the property slopes so much, sloped very much, it'd be difficult to do that.
Understood. Okay, please continue.
On the rendering here, I just wanted to touch on the materials a little bit. As you can see, on three sides of the building, actually, the one side on the south side, you can't see it, but we also have the same split-faced masonry wraps around a 10-foot in that side of the building. It's only about 10 foot. Basically, with the buffer zone and all the landscaping, you really won't be able to see that building very much. From the center, the three-foot retaining wall, then you have the six-foot fence, and also landscaping that side of the building will not be very visible. The main areas you're going to see are where the canopies are, entrance canopies with the red columns. That's where we have the raised-up masonry. We also have masonry around by where the overhead doors are for the storage area. We also have some benches there for the kids to use on rowing days. The masonry is going to be, it's going to be a gray to tan range. We haven't picked out exact colors for the project yet. Same with the remainder of the building, which is going to be metal. We're looking again to be in a tan to gray range for the metal, and later on, with help from the club, we'll pick out exact colors. We also have entrance canopies that are going to have downlighting underneath the canopies to light both entrances. We've added red to the structure of those canopies. We're trying to make this building appear less as a commercial building and to fit better with the function of, function with the club's going to have. And it's also school-related. There's also going to be lights that will shine down over top of the overhead doors to give lighting in the storage area in the evenings. And if you have any questions?
Okay, let's see if there are any questions specifically about architecture now. And we're going to come back to this. So, you know, at a high level, any questions? If not, we'll come back, we'll come back, we'll hit more detail on this after the public hearing.
Okay.
Just a clarification.
Clarification.
I think I understood what he said. Looking at the elevations here and having trouble making sense of it, you're saying that the existing house that is south sits higher than the property?
Yes, basically because of the 6,000 square foot of the building. If you drove by the site, you can actually see it, it looks like it sits up on a hill. Basically, this building... Basically, this building needs to sit on a flat site, so we kind of have to pull that hill down to make a flat building path for it to sit on, which creates a little bit of elevation. It's not a lot, it's a three-foot max elevation difference between the two sites.
Okay, so there'll be a retaining wall that steps it down from the neighbor's house to the, to the flat, essentially, and a fence directly behind that?
Yes. And again, if there was, if there was no easement there, we could probably just create a slope to make up for the difference, but we were trying to provide an easement for the neighbor, it was, it became necessary.
Okay. By the way.
Additional, additional thoughts? Okay, I want to park one question in your head for you, okay? I'm concerned about, about the actual grade difference. When the fence is not there, if the fence is there, obviously, no one's going to step across it and fall three feet and hurt themselves. What, okay, how, at the, at either end where there is no fence, what is the grade, what does the step change? You know, is someone still going to fall three feet, or are they going to fall two feet, or one foot, or six inches?
As you can see on drawing CE1, the actual elevation difference is very...
Okay, I don't, I don't need the answer now.
Okay, yeah.
What I want is to discuss this point later.
Yeah.
Again, it's a safety concern.
Okay, just basically, the elevation difference is very, very little. I'm just kind of showing you where you can find it to see it yourself, but actually, the elevation difference is very little on, at the far ends of the fence. It may be six inches, it may be zero.
Okay, well, you can, you can look at it, and you can tell us when you come back.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Boggs. Okay.
Before we turn to the other issues, just to address points that Brian raised, if you are interested, I do have cut sheets or information sheets about the turf stone for the tarmac. I have enough for every member. I also have information sheet about the floating dock as well, if you'd like to see those now, or we can address it later.
I'll address it later.
Very well. As well as the fencing, but I don't think that's really an issue.
Nope.
The hour is late. I had a nice flowery speech about who we are and why we're here, and with your blessing, I'll skip that. I think you know who we are and why we're here.
Yes, for certain.
Let's turn to the...
Let's cut to the chase.
Yeah, let's do that. And let's go with the easy issue first, and that would be the parking. As Brian indicated, I think his overall opinion is that the parking is adequate, but I want to be clear on the record that this is a lease. We have, as part of our lease with the golf course, we have leased fourteen spaces that are directly adjacent to our property line, and north of that, just north of that, in the same parking area, there are twelve spaces, which are, we have a shared parking arrangement on as-needed basis. That lease, so you are also clear, is a thirty-year lease with five renewable terms at the boat club's option. I don't think any of us will be here talking about that at the end of those leases. However, Brian does make a valid point that, in the event something should happen at the end of that thirty years or some, something else, we do have adequate space at the front of the building to create parking, should it be necessary, as well as the Wayne County access. And if you wish to make that a condition of your approval, we have no objection to that, but for the next foreseeable future, it will not be an issue. If you have no other issues or questions about, oh, there was an issue with Brian, and I don't know if you want me to talk about the parking calculations and the number of drivers, and if not, then I'll move on.
Move on.
Very well. The running question is safety. And let me touch first on the submitted safety plan. We initially submitted it with the pre-application hearing. We referenced it in our actual application, but it wasn't quote-unquote formally submitted as part of this application, and so we did supplement our submission, and hopefully, you've all had an opportunity to see the seven-page, single-spaced plan. Just the general highlights of the plan are that, firstly, you have to understand, as the boats, the boats move, there is a coxswain who gives the members carrying the boat directions, and so they move in unison. And so, the plan is to have what we're calling safety escorts, if you will, similar to the crossing guards at schools, because we utilize the crossing guard standards as a model for our plan. They will first don reflective vests and carry reflective cones. They will themselves independently determine whether it's safe to enter the road. Just the safety escorts, they will place a cone in each oncoming direction of traffic. They will then, as the plan is submitted, they were going, they would have the wands, flashlights with the red wands, and they would act as safety escorts in that fashion. Chief Porzarelli reviewed the plan, approved it, but he also offered to supplement the plan with handheld stop signs, which we are wholeheartedly thank you and endorse, and will become part of our plan. So, they will be using the reflective stop signs, just like crossing guards at the school. As I indicated in the plan, the vests and the cones all meet ANSI standards for reflective material for crossing guard. The, once the, the traffic is stopped, to the extent that there is any, and a safe traffic gap is created, the coxy will then, or the coxswain, sorry, will then permit the boat to cross. The plan is that they would move diagonally if there is no traffic coming. If there is traffic that is actually stopped, they would move parallel to the road, shorten the duration of time that there is any traffic stopped, if that's clear. The process would then be repeated when they come back. There are approximately, let's say, four crossings a day would be the maximum. The boats going, returning, and then if there's a practice in the afternoon, the same, same Now, in addition to that, Brian, in his letter, asked for investigation with Wayne County to determine whether they would authorize painting of a cross rock in West River Road, as well as placement of pedestrian crossing signs. So to that end, on April thirtieth, I spoke to Kenneth Kussel, who I believe Chief Porzarelli knows, as well as, let's see, Barry Sedlock knows him, as well as our consulting engineer from Charles Rains, who can speak to his, his position, but he is the deputy director of Department of Public Services for Wayne County. And obviously, since there's no formal application, he couldn't approve the request at this time. It was more of an advisory opinion, but he said certainly under the current manual for traffic control devices, which Michigan has adopted, this crossing, this is what would be technically called a mid-block crossing, would meet the requirements for painted cross rock, as well as signage, and he said that once a formal application had been submitted, he sees no reason why it would not be approved. Having said that, I also need to advise you that, because this is a mid-block crossing under Wayne County ordinances, it's one of those quirky things where it leaves the deputy director of public safety's realm and falls into the county highway engineer's approval. He said applying the same standards, he would come to the same conclusion under the same facts. But I have not spoken to the county engineer, but I wanted to at least be clear. During that telephone conversation, I also spoke to the deputy director about the issue of a lighted pedestrian crossing signal for, because it had been raised at our pre-application hearing to investigate it. And I will tell you, first off, that he said it is not necessary at this crossing, and I will tell you the reasons why, and then we can address it any further. What he said is, a lighted pedestrian crossing is required when there's an increased risk factor to pedestrians due to elements such as a hidden or obscure crossing, wide multi-lane streets, higher speeds on the roadway, and higher frequencies of crossings during the day. Says, under those conditions, this crossing would not meet that design element criteria. He's personally familiar with the location, as well as West River Road. I can tell you that, under the standards, a marked crosswalk alone is not permitted when speeds exceed forty miles an hour, when the roadway has four or more lanes of travel without a raised median, or the roadway has four or more lanes of travel with a raised median, yet traffic exceeds fifteen thousand vehicles per day. Obviously, we don't fall into that. Looking at particular factors here, the deputy director, applying that the boathouse doesn't meet these elements because the speed limit is relatively low, the roadway is narrow, site distance clearance is quite expansive. As you recall, with our pre-application, his department measured, and it's in excess of five hundred feet in both directions. And he said that there would be relatively few crossings per day, and therefore, under the applicable regulations, it would not be required. And I, I am, I'm just leaving it at that. It's not a requirement of Wayne County at this point. I also looked, and I'll save you the analysis, detailed analysis, we don't have any other lighted crossings, signals on the island under similar crossing at all, even though there are some variables that are similar and some variables that are different. The only mid-block crossings we have are on West River Road, I'm sorry, on McComb Street, as well as Meridian, at Meridian Elementary School. McComb Street, slightly wider, speed limit is twenty-five, which is five miles an hour less than on West River Road. Site distance comparable, although McComb is probably longer. Most significantly, the traffic volumes and the pedestrian volumes along McComb Street will be much larger, are much greater than would be at this proposed site. While the duration of the crossings at the boathouse might be longer if they're perpendicular or diagonal to the street, again, their crossing would be assisted by the escorts, much like the school crossing guards. At Meridian, the road is wider, speeds are forty miles an hour, thirty-five, sorry. And the pedestrian crossings are by younger children, less mature in terms of judging traffic gaps. There are more children crossing, and the frequency of crossings are greater. And consistent with state law and recommended procedures, there are safety guards, crossing guards, whenever there is a crossing there. Yet, we don't require a lighted pedestrian crossing signal there. What is required, or what is erected, is a similar yellow caution sign, pedestrian crossing sign, showing schoolchildren with a hand in their mother's hand. So, having, having said that, chief, the chief, I think I can speak for you, has reviewed the plan, has approved the plan. I think we submitted that as part of our, our submittal. And so, underscoring this, a lighted signal crossing, according to Wayne County, is not required. The crossings that would take place here in the earliest hours would be five-thirty in the morning, there are no night crossings. Five-thirty, depending on the day, I'm sorry, the time of the year, it's either dawn or slightly before, but I don't want to mislead you all by saying it's always going to be in dawn morning light. There is a possibility, early in the spring, with a five-thirty crossing, that it is starting to get light, but it's still dark, with all due candor. Having said that, we are, we understand these student athletes, everyone speaks of them as sort of this nebulous, they're our children, and our children's safety is paramount, as would your children's be, and hopefully, your children will participate. And with that in mind, even though it is not required by Wayne County, we would request that they erect at least a street light illuminating the crossings, so that anyone approaching can see that they're, that it would illuminate the reflective paint on the street, and we'd be, we would welcome to make that a condition of approval. And I know that there are members of the commission who would like to see a lighted traffic signal, regardless of what Wayne County's requirements are. One thought is that it would be a, instead of an incessant flashing light, which might disturb the neighbor, and there is then also the attending cost to the township of running a light that may not be necessary during the day, or in the middle of the night when no one's crossing, that it would be activated. I don't know what the technical term is, but essentially, a push button that would activate warning light, and it would stay on for whatever determined time that the traffic engineer comes up with, and then the crossing would be completed. If that is your wish, we would request, Wayne County, to erect that as well. I think costs is, I don't know, I think it's fifty thousand dollars, and if that's what your wish is, we will find the money someplace, and we will make sure that everyone is safe through the redundancy. As I said, our children are of paramount importance, and I'm sure you echo and share that same concern. And so, having said that, if you have any further questions about the safety plan, I'm prepared to take them now, or if you want to wait until afterwards, we can address them as well.
Let's see if there are any comments on the safety plan. Anybody have any thoughts? Okay?
I'll wait in.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I'm on. Yeah, this is, I mean, there are a lot of important things here, some of them related to site plan, some of them in that gray area in between, and that sort of thing, and those are of concern to me, but safety, I think you've indicated, is the number-one concern here.
Absolutely.
And striking a balance, I mean, you know, we could put railroad crossing, you know, things that come down, and, you know, and so there's overkill, and then there's underkill, and the key is that we strike a balance that I think weighs towards, towards overkill. If we're going to err one way or the other, I think, I think we're all in agreement that that'd be the right way. I'm interested in your thoughts, I, I've heard some of your thoughts. I'm interested in the thoughts of everybody, because I think, you know, it is a, it is a rather long run, you know, as you approach it, but it's five-thirty in the morning, it could be dark, it could be foggy, people are driving, and they're not expecting to see anybody on the road at that time, and so they might be, you know, texting, and whatever they might be doing, drinking their coffee. I mean, for those reasons, you know, I'm very concerned about this, and more concerned than I might be otherwise. And, you know, I'm, I'm not sure where I'm going to fall on this. I like, I think the stop signs are a great idea, I think huge improvement over the, you know, red cone things, and I was glad to hear that. Flashing light is more, more is better, is, but, but cost is an issue, I understand that, and so, I just wanted to get that out there. I think probably many of us are feeling the same way, so I don't want to speak for everybody by any means, but I just, I didn't want the chance to pass before, without making that comment.
Okay, before I ask any other commissioners, I'd like to hear from your chief on this.
I reviewed the safety plan with Mr. Ames, and it was very well-written. I think that they were very careful in hitting all the points. And actually, I've been doing some research on some safety equipment that, that may help them even more. I'm not sure if it will hit the threshold you're looking for, but when we started our crossing guard program on Meridian, in front of Meridian School, all they made was the regular safety, or I'm sorry, the regular stop signs, they're red, they're reflective, handheld fiberglass, whatever they're made out of, plastic. Now they have, I just found, just a couple of days ago, and they have the same type of stop sign, handheld, with LED right, LED lighting around it, and it was very inexpensive. I was, it's the exact same cost as a regular one, I was, I was kind of surprised. But I think that something like that, and I also found, which we have for officers, is the cone is a real good... is the cone is a real good idea, because it has the red on one side, but they do make flashlights that they can use that have strobe lights, and they really get your attention. The officers use them while they're walking up to cars, so the car behind you can see you and see something in front. It's just an added safety measure. So, besides their plan, I think that I'll be more than happy to meet with these gentlemen anytime. I've got some ideas and some products to show them, and I think that it would be very helpful. Again, I'm not sure if that hits the threshold, I realize that, as Mr. Flesland said, that the cost for, it's either an actuated or an activated sign that would say pedestrian crossing, I mean, it's a pretty big ordeal. You think, ah, just a sign, and we put some lights on and hit the button and it just flashes yellow at the time. It's very costly. I mean, it's as much as a three-way light at an intersection from beginning to end. So, anyway, I looked at that plan, and obviously, is better more, it is when you're talking about the children, is about safety. Is there a point, Mr. Fushy brought up, is there a point where it's too much? Could be, but anything that we can come up together as a group and find out and everybody be happy, especially on this commission, okay, this project and their safety issue, I think would be good. So, I'll be more than happy to keep working with them, I'll be more than happy to show them. I'd like to meet with Gary there and show him these products that are out there, and they're really not that expensive. Again, I'm not saying they will take the place of what you're looking for, the possibility of a higher threshold when it comes to Wayne County and that roadway, but, I mean, you're doing everything that's out there, you're doing everything possible that's out there, and that's all you can do. I mean, and again, it is, I would be neglectful if I didn't say the most important thing here is to not just find the balance, but find the best possible way to keep everybody safe going through there, in and out, so.
Well, I'm certain that they would appreciate, you know, any additional information and new technology that would help. I mean, the goal that we all have is the same.
Yeah, I'm surprised there's all that out there now, because it wasn't out there when we were checking two years ago for ours, so it isn't.
Yeah, we don't want to have unnecessary costs, but at the same point, we want to get to the goal that literally, when this, you know, assuming this project moves ahead, that, you know, whether it's five-thirty in the morning and it's dark and foggy, or it's the middle of the afternoon, that we have a very, very high threshold that the children at that facility are going to be safe, as safe as we can practically make them.
I wholeheartedly agree, and Chief, if we would endorse and utilize those same traffic control devices, the LEDs is an awesome idea, hadn't even considered it, that's why he's over there and I'm over here, as well as the strobe lights. And we incorporate that into our safety plan as well.
You know, I definitely applaud your willingness to, you know, to take something like this on. Now, I mean, like, I was out there last night at eleven o'clock, and, you know, a streetlight there at the crossing would make a big difference in terms of visibility. It's dark, okay, and that's great.
Yeah.
If you can, if you can get together and you can confidently, you know, use this new technology to have the same effect at less cost as an automated sign, okay, present it, okay? But you've got to be confident, and you've got to be competent, and you've got to come in here and you've got to convince us, so.
I certainly will. I'll commit to you that I will do everything that I can with the chief, be more than confident, because right now I have two children carrying boats, and I'd like them to come home at night.
Just out of curiosity, when the boats, I know there are a lot of, I looked at the count of boats in the storage area there, do more than one boat go out at the same time?
Yes.
How many boats, I mean?
Scott, what are we running now?
Five or six.
Five or six boats.
Okay.
They're varying from a two-person boat to the eight-person, which is a long.
Okay, so this is kind of a caravan that's going across the road. Do they go out at the same time, or, I mean, because they can't get on the dock at the same time?
No, they aren't, they aren't.
They'll all launch within ten minutes of each other.
It's not a parade, but yes, they are within ten minutes from one side to the other.
Oh, okay.
They're very efficient.
That's pretty interesting, I didn't know that.
Wish I didn't invite you to Hawaii on Saturday, you could have seen their operation.
Ah, okay. Yeah, might have helped. Okay, so that's the number one issue. I think at this point, unless you've got something else that you feel is pressing, I'd like to stop, and I'd like to go to the public hearing.
Very well, thank you.
Okay, so at this point, I'm going to open the public hearing for comments. All comments are to be directed to the chair, and if there are any questions, we'll attempt to get answers to them. Otherwise, we'll capture them, and when the public hearing is over, we'll feed it back to our experts and others to get answers. So, formally opening the public hearing, please raise your hand, and we'll work our way around the room, starting over here. Who wants to speak? Mr. Krantz?
Kent.
Kent, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Peter Kent, 22119 West River Road. I've lived on West River Road for about thirty years, within a half a mile of the site, for a while there, within a quarter mile of the site, so I know that road fairly well. I drive past the site a couple of times a day, generally. At five-thirty in the morning, there aren't any cars on that road. I mean, I run on that road, my kids have stayed on the bus stop on that road, you know, kids that are a lot younger than these rowers cross that road in the dark every day to get on the bus. They stand on the side of the road waiting for the bus. And as far as I know, there haven't been any accidents out there. I think your emphasis on safety is well-placed, but I don't think you should go overboard. The plans that I've heard with the coxswain directing the boats across with the stop signs or strobe lights or whatever, I think are more than adequate. I mean, I don't think they'll ever have to stop a car, because there just aren't any cars out there at that time of the day. Even in the middle of the day, there are very few. I run on that road in the morning, and sometimes I'll run for ten minutes and never see a car. So, I don't think the traffic safety issue is a real issue. What is an issue out there, safety-wise, is the condition of West River Road. I mean, just crossing that road and not tripping, falling down and breaking your boat is going to be a problem. So, maybe that needs to be addressed, you know, how do you get a smooth crossing across the road? Don't worry so much about the traffic, because there isn't any, but the potholes there are bigger than some of those kids. So, that's probably my biggest concern, safety-wise. As far as the design of the building, I think it's, you know, size-wise, it's great. I'd like to see something that better fits the residential community. This is the first time I saw the rendering of the building, and it looks like, no offense, looks like a bus garage or something like that, and I think it could be made a little more compatible with the surroundings. I think West Shore Country Club does a very good job with their architecture and fitting in with the neighborhood. I think I'd like to see something more along those lines for the building itself. I mean, the red columns, come on, are going to stick out like a sore thumb, that's not what this neighborhood's about. So, I think you need to take another look at that and try and fit the design of the building, or the architecture, the styling of the building, have it fit better with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. Digital comments, questions? Can't believe all these people came with nothing to say.
Mr. Kostroff.
Where? Oh, way in the back. Mr. Kostroff. Please give us your address, please.
Ed Kostroff, excuse me, 23215 West River Road, corner of Ferry, south corner. I'm a little bit confused. We were talking special use, and I didn't hear any special land use talk. It was more construction, more safety, and if safety is the issue of the special land use, I'll address that. But this is an R-1A district, it is a residential district. Thank you, Mr. Kent, for noticing that this building looks like Joe's garage in four hundred places that you'd take your car to be repaired. It does not look like anything else in the neighborhood. Not my house, not the country club, not the Keeler's house, nobody's house. It looks like a garage. I think it needs to look like it belongs in the community if you approve it. But it is an R-1A district, it is a residential district, and I think we need to keep it a residential district. The rowing club has an excellent facility to row out of right now in Windott. No child is being discriminated against. They are rowing in one of the best facilities for high school rowers in the country. Wouldn't we like to see rowing in our own rowing club on Grosse Seal? Yes, I would. But I wouldn't want to see it in a residential area. I think if it can be fit somewhere else, down at Point Hattipin, down at Waters Edge, then let's explore that. I think what we're looking at right here is not a good thing for our kids. We're talking about safety. You familiar with rowing boats? The eights they're talking about weigh two-twenty to two-sixty, they range in sixty feet lengths. You're going to cross this road and bring two or three of them across the road in ten minutes with the oars, with the coaches' boats, with the gas you need to fill the coaches' boats with? You're going to bring a couple of fours and maybe a pair. You're going to do that in ten minutes? It's not going to happen. But if it does, are you going to block West River Road for ten minutes to let these boats all cross? I think that's pretty dangerous by itself. Safety is a big issue. Mr. Flesland, I believe, said there would be four crossings a day, probably. And that crossing is you're taking the boats over and putting them in the water at five-thirty, you're taking them out at six-forty-five or seven, whatever time the kids have to get back to school, and you're putting them again in the afternoon after school, when there is a lot of traffic, when golfers are going to play golf, when golfers are leaving the golf course, when commercial vehicles are driving up and down West River, and I live there, so I can tell you that they do drive there. You know, there are commercial vehicles, there's trucks, there's delivery trucks, there's construction people, there's quite a bit of traffic there. I don't want to disclaim anything that the people have already said concerning the safety of the issue, it is the most important issue for those kids. I was involved in rowing for nine years. I was the president of the club for a while. I'm not patting myself on the back, I am telling you facts, because I do like rowing. I think it's a wonderful sport for our kids. I don't think it belongs in a residential neighborhood, and I don't think it is anything we should take a chance at safety with. In my nine years with the club, I was never aware of another rowing club that crossed a major street every day to load their boats. During regattas, Marietta crosses the road, a couple of the other ones are in more dedicated areas where you don't have residents. They were in reservoirs, they were in parks and things of that nature. But you will have crossings, and you not only take the boat across, you take these long oars or blades, whatever you want to call them, across, you carry those across separately from the boats, and you carry, as I said, the coaches' boats, will they be anchored down at the water and left there permanently? I don't know if that's part of the approval or part of the plan. Coaches' boats have motors, just like all fishing boats. You've got to gas them up, where are you going to store the gas? All that's an issue that all needs to be addressed. Might be in their extensive safety plan, I haven't seen it though, and haven't heard about it. But you will have multiple crossings. Who are the crossing guards? Are they kids that aren't rowing that day? Are they adults? Are they volunteers who know what they're doing? Who are these crossing guards? I'd like to know. The other thing is parking, and Mr. Flesland said there was fourteen places allocated. In the literature that I have on the proposal from West Shore to the Grosse Seal Rowing Club, it's ten. So, Scott, if you have four coaches, you've probably got four cars down there. Each coach is going to drive by himself. If you have a couple of volunteers that are down there assisting, adults, family members, you know, parents of the kids, maybe you have three or four of those. So, now we've got six or eight cars down there, and I'll throw in the two crossing guards. So, we've got eight out of ten spaces taken, or eight out of fourteen. I had children, most of you have children, if you have children that drive, do they want to ride with four people in the car, they want to drive their car and go by themselves to rowing? Well, if they don't have a car, maybe they want a bummer ride from Joe or Steve or Susie or Mary. But two people in a car is probably a good average. You've got thirty rowers, you've got fifteen cars. So, now we're talking twenty-three cars that need to be parked on a normal day. That takes up both sides of that parking lot that we're talking about, the ten or twelve on one side, and the ten on the opposite side, whatever it happens to be. So, that south side of the country club will be all rowing parking. Will they end up parking on the side street, or will there always be parking at the golf course? I don't know. I can remember the old days when West Shore had tournaments, and they were parked all over West River. They filled parking on the water side, they parked on West River, and they parked on Ferry. And that happened twice a year, and it was no big deal. Where is all this overflow parking going to be? Where is it going to, how are they going to account for it? Noise is a big issue. If I told you that safety was my only issue, I would be wrong, because I am right there on the corner, and I know rowing very well. You have Cox boxes, you have kids hollering, you have kids peeling around the corner trying to get to rowing on time so they don't have to run an extra mile. You have a lot of issues that happen with kids, and the noise is there. I don't currently have that noise. The people who are north of me will have more noise than I do, only because odds are they're going to row north, not south, because the water gets rougher as you go towards Free Bridge. So, they're going to row down towards Windott, and the people will experience that noise. They'll experience the normal noise of kids goofing off, having a good time, because they're high school kids, and we all did it. To say they're not going to do it, and to say that you're going to try and keep them quiet and police it is a nice statement, but it isn't going to happen practically. The noise is an issue for me and for my neighbors. One of the things I would like to say is, if it's okay, if you approve this, and it's okay for me and my neighbors to hear this noise, is it okay for me to record this noise at whatever decibel level it is and come and play it at your houses at five-thirty in the morning? Or at six-thirty, or at seven in the morning? Or at three or four in the afternoon? Is it okay to do that? If it is, then I would say they have a chance, you should have a chance at approving it. If it's not okay, then why inflict it on me and my neighbors? Because we bought our homes in an R-1A district, paid the taxes to live on the water, me for four years, my neighbors some longer, some shorter, so that we would have a quiet neighborhood to live in. And now, we're going to do this. I am not against rowing, I don't want anybody to think I have a personal vendetta against rowing or anybody in rowing. I like the sport. I have two daughters that rowed in it, and as I said, I was involved in it for nine years. I would be more than happy to help them look for a different place, but this is an option that they have. And the only other thing that I'd like to bring to your attention when you make this decision, is Mr. Borben talked to the Land Conservancy Group, and when he spoke to you, he mentioned one thing, does this impact the neighborhood? Yes, absolutely, it impacts the neighborhood if you put it in a residential section in this R-1A district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Let's see if we can address a couple of these questions right quick, if we could. First, you asked a question about special land use standards, that you hadn't heard those yet. There are six special land use standards, which after this public hearing, Brian will There are six special land use standards, which after this public hearing, Brian will lead us through one at a time, and those that are most relevant we'll discuss. Okay? And we haven't got to it yet because we got off on the most important issue, which was safety. So you will hear the six standards, and we will go through them one at a time to evaluate which of those apply and which of those do not apply. Second, let's ask a couple of questions about the specifics. First, the issue of parking, 10 versus 14 spots. Can you comment on that, please?
Absolutely. If you wish, and I think we furnished it to you with our application, is a copy of the executed lease. The executed lease says 14 spaces. It is 14 spaces, not 10.
Okay.
Also, north of that are 12 spaces. Those are also dedicated, not under the lease, but under a shared arrangement. And the gentleman from West Shore is here who can confirm that.
Okay, no, it's fine. So there are 14 places, which are leased specifically for the club.
Yes.
And on the north side of that same parking lot, you say there are 12 additional spots, which are basically shared duty between the golf course and the boat club.
Yes.
Okay. So at 5:00 in the morning, if 15 cars show up, 14 go on your spot, one goes on the other spot.
Correct.
And that's acceptable to everybody?
Correct.
To the golf course and to you?
Yes.
The issue of numbers of cars?
Yes.
Any comments on the count that came forward? Four for the coaches, two for the crossing guards, two for, okay, 23. Talk to me about that.
There will never be 23 cars.
Okay.
I can't say that because we aren't there now, but I can confidently say that's an exaggeration.
Okay.
The crossing guards, first of all, let's eliminate those two cars. Crossing guards will be the coach and one of the senior students or the Cox Swain, who will receive training before they're out there. So those are, those cars are not an issue. Let's talk about what actually happens here. Most of these kids on this team are not of driving age. It has been the tradition and continues to be, the older kids pick up the younger kids and ferry them to the practice. My daughter, before she drove for two years, had that arrangement. She now drives four kids to practice, those who don't have license. My son gets a ride from another student who has four students, cars. I'm sorry, four passengers in the car. So I think four as an average would be an overstatement. It's more like three.
Okay.
All right? Three, you can do the math, three into 40 kids. We're never going, and then, how many coaches' cars do we have, Scott? Four cars? We're never going to exceed what we have leased and what has been dedicated as shared. And more importantly, we are never going to exceed 174 parking spaces at West Shore and ever park in the street. That's ridiculous.
Okay, no parking in the street?
Correct.
Okay, now, what are you going to do when West Shore has a golf outing?
We have, in the lease agreement, it is agreed that on their major events, we will be notified and cooperate, and they have, it's their parking lot, they have priority.
Including the 14 spots that you leased?
Absolutely. Now, understand, there are special events around the weekends, kids are away competing. So there's never going to be really an issue, except perhaps on a Thursday, if you have a Thursday. But it is, they have priority, they're their spaces, and if there ever is that an issue about that, there will be no rowers there at that facility.
Do you ever envision an event where you put on a rowing competition, or where a whole bunch of people come?
Yes, I can answer that definitively. There will not be any competitions out of that facility, ever.
Okay.
In the 150 years of this lease. Even though I won't be here, I can confidently tell you, there will not be a competition hosted out of that facility.
Okay. So again, the crossing guards, you said are going to be?
Adults.
Adult, coach?
Coaches. There are more than one adult at that. There will be adults, coaches, who will be the crossing guards.
Okay. And/or a senior?
And if there, then it would be a senior member of the team.
Okay. Talk about the issue of the motorboats.
The motorboats are...
What's the deal with these?
They are, on, the bottom line is, they are carried from the facility to the water, never, ever, ever stored at the water, and then they are carried back at the end of the day. They are gassed, fueled in the facility, and the fuel is kept in a fireproof cabinet designated for fuel storage.
And one of these goes out with each boat?
Typically, no, there's what, two, three coaches' boats?
Safe ratio, one, two, or three or four coaches' boats out to watch all the crews.
For those who couldn't hear, there'll be two to three, perhaps four, coaches' boats to keep the safe ratio with the kids.
Okay, these are rescue boats, I take it?
They're rowboats.
Rowboats?
Yeah.
Motorboats?
Yeah, with, they're aluminum rowboats with, you typically see for fishing with a little motor.
Then they follow the rows, the people doing the rowing?
No.
They don't?
No.
What do they do?
What?
They escort the crew.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought he said, they're not, not the rowboats, they follow, they're like, they're coaches' boats.
Escort, okay, I got you, all right.
I misunderstood your question.
So the motorboats are coming across, then?
Yes.
The skiffs are coming across?
Yes.
Whatever the...
Shells.
Shells, they're coming across, okay. The question of noise?
Yes.
Okay. Now, talk about noise, both in two categories. First, noise on the land and noise in the water.
All right. Noise on the land, first of all, understand, when cars arrive, they're parking on the north side of the building, shielded from residents by the building, as well as the fence and the landscape. I put to you, they will never hear anyone coming and going. Secondly, that gentleman standing right there, or sitting right there, Scott C. Tag, the coach, does not tolerate any goofing around. This is not a sport that you can permit any goofing around. It is a very dedicated sport, carrying, as we said earlier, very expensive boats, expensive equipment. There is no room and none is ever tolerated for any kind of horsing around. All right, now, yeah, after practice, before they leave, there might be talking, we're talking later in the hours, definitely not on the way out, definitely not on the way back with their boats. All right? I'm not sure if that, let me just check my notes, if that addresses everything in terms of noise on the land. I have for you, we heard it then, about noise out on the water, the Cox boxes, among other things. And I have for you, if you'd like, a good approach, information about the Cox boxes. And I think it would be...
What exactly is that? What is it? Is it an amplifier, or?
In a sense, yes. But fully in the...
Can you put one on the, just put one on the monitor there?
Absolutely.
Brian, oh.
We're stuck on the presentation.
Technologically challenged.
All right, as you can imagine, you've got a boat, eight kids in the boat, and the Cox Swain is at one end of the boat. He's trying to communicate to all eight members. In the old days, you all have imagined, you can see the megaphone, where the man's telling the kids what to do, and as he's doing that, he's telling everybody around him what to do. It was difficult for strategy to say, give me hard 10 pulls, and not have a guy next to you know what you were going to do. The Cox boxes are, I'm sorry, the speakers, they're eight-ounce speakers mounted on the floor of the boat, under the seats. They are, the decibel level I don't have for you here, but in the information you'll see, they are also volume controlled. The idea is, when the Cox Swain tells the crew, I need 10, give me 10 hard strokes, that everybody in that boat is working in unison and giving the same number of strokes at the same time. And also, that the boat next to you does not know what you're doing. So the speak, the volume is loud enough for those sitting in the boat, sitting above the speakers, these, again, small eight-ounce speakers, to hear what the commands are, but it's designed so that no one else hears it. Does that make sense?
It does make sense.
It's no longer are you broadcasting to everyone what you're doing. So the strategy is much, much more refined through technology. And in terms of actual experience, these boats presently row out of Windott. They row north. They row past the condominiums just north of Portofino's, and then the houses along the shore. We have never received one noise complaint. Now, I don't know whether the township, to be flippant, if I may, has the ability to regulate the use of a navigable river and the noise out there. We want to be good neighbors. This volume is only going to be enough so that the kids in the boat hear it, purposely controlling the volume, being respectful of the time of day. And again, like the neighbors in Windott, no one is ever going to hear or complain about the noise from the Cox boxes.
Okay. Additional question that was raised was relative to afternoon traffic, afternoon traffic on the road relative to the crossing time?
Correct.
How would this be managed?
Exact same way as it is any time with any crossing, with the same safety plan in place with any traffic, whether it is one car, two cars. You wait until the crossing guards, lack of a better term, crossing assistants, wait until they themselves can safely enter the roadway in a gap in traffic, will then put in the traffic control devices, including the LED signs that we have, strobe signs, cones, safety vests. At that point, once there's a safe gap in traffic, then the boats will be permitted to pass, whether that is one at a time, or whether they'll have to stop and allow traffic, is a judgment call of the assistants, just like the judgment call of a school crossing guard, whether there's a balance in who needs to go first or second, and it's just a human judgment call.
All right, so it's not, the analogy you used was a parade. It's not a parade for 10 minutes?
No.
Okay, it's based on the reality of how many cars are waiting or whatever?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. The other issues that were raised are things that we're going to have to talk about at length, and one is the building appearance relative to neighborhood compatibility?
Yes.
And the issue of the architecture relative to what's around it?
Yes.
That's a more detailed discussion that we'll hit later.
Right.
And I think that covers the essence, oh, the safety issue.
Yes.
The safety concern we talked about earlier, and you're coming back with additional input from Chief Porcelari?
Right, and I would, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, go ahead, please.
On our application, at least verbally, I'll represent as an amendment to our application for your consideration, as a condition for approval, that we would work with Chief Porcelari on a revised plan incorporating the latest in technology, including but not limited to the LED signs and the strobe lights, in order to strike a balance between redundant and necessary safety for the children, yet at not an exorbitant cost. And my suggestion is, would the condition be, once we've worked out with the plan, if the chief is willing to indicate in a letter that this plan has been worked on, developed, and approved by him, and incorporates those additional elements of safety, we'd be more than happy to make that an additional, conditional.
Okay. All right, those were the issues that were raised, and those are the answers that you have provided. We're going to go back now to the public?
Very well.
And find out additional input. Yes, sir, come on up, please, give us your name and your address. Welcome to the planning commission.
Thank you. Robert Petrie, 23051, Veridian Road. I'm the president of West Shore, and I'm also a member of the Fort Yat Club. I'd like to talk about the parking places. 14 is the right number, with an additional 12, I think, on the other side. The major events that we have at West Shore that pretty much fill our parking lot and the grass across on the waterside are in the summer, mostly on the weekend. And as I understand it, the rowing club, their programs are reduced significantly in the summer and on weekends. So I don't see parking as an issue. Secondly, noise was one of the considerations we golfers talked about because the club building backs up to our 17th green and our 18th tee box. And if you've watched a whole lot of golf, you know, and you're ready to swing the club and somebody sneezes, that destroys your golf game, you know?
That's my excuse all the time.
Yeah, I use that a lot, too, yeah. Do you get mulligans? So anyhow, we talked about that, and we were assured that noise wouldn't be an issue. And there is a green buffer between our green and tee, and I think to the south, between the neighbor. Additionally, if you've been near the water, pretty much any time during the walleye runs or whatever, the go-fast fishing boats with 300 horsepower motors on them, you know, they're zipping up and down that river making a whole lot more noise than a racing skull, and the big power boats and so on and so forth. I live on Thoroughfare Canal, and I don't know what you call them, but it's one-to-two man boats, maybe 40 feet long. And it's such a beautiful thing to see them rowing down Thoroughfare. It's wonderful. So, I mean, and these are older people, so they probably went through some kind of program like the rowing club, and then have taken it up for exercise the rest of their lives. So I, the board at West Shore fully supports this activity. We've signed the lease agreement as mentioned. We have a purchase agreement in place. Our membership approves them, and we look forward to having the rowing club as our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petrie. Okay, additional comments going around the room. Hand in the back, yes, sir. Or yes, ma'am, excuse me. All I saw was the hand. Give us your name, please, and address.
Kathy Shields, 8601 Bridge Road. To speak to the noise, my daughter was a rower here for four years and in college for four years. You can't talk in a boat. One, you can't, the coxswain won't let you, and you don't have the energy to talk. You are so busy working, you just can't possibly talk. At 5:00 in the morning, they're not talking. They're barely awake, and they just got there. So they are task-oriented, and they are going to, you know, go get their boats out because they're cutting into their practice time goofing around. So, you know, I don't think noise in the morning is the issue. Noise in the afternoon, there's a lot of noise around, so I don't think that kids talking should be a concern. As far as having, you know, a boathouse here on the island, it will promote rowing in the community. And I think it's important. There's a lot of opportunities, especially for women. My daughter was a recipient of a college scholarship and had the opportunity to row on the under-23 world team. So the opportunities that the children will be afforded are, you know, immeasurable, and life skills that they'll learn forever. life skills that they'll learn forever. So that was it.
Thank you, Ms. Shields. Additional comments working around the room? Yes, sir, Mr. O'Connor.
Tim O'Connor, 8148 Island Boulevard. I'm a four-year rowing dad. My daughter graduated last year and is now rowing for MSU. They are right with the cars. As an undergraduate, an underclassman, she rowed with, to practice every day with the upperclassman. And when she became an upperclassman, she carted four kids. So it's five kids showing up with one car. I think it's interesting, we're spending a whole lot of time talking about safety. A couple of years ago, my daughter had the opportunity to go to Germany, till she lived there during the summer, she found a rowing club near Monheim. And how their rowers got to the venue was, they came out of the boathouse, carried it down a flight of stairs that was approximately thirty feet long, had to cross the main road, cross the railroad, and go down to the river. They've been doing it for over a hundred years and no one ever got hurt. So I think we can handle Groseal, not to underestimate the need for safety, but it's doable. The noise, again, I want to echo what the others have said, these kids show up, they just want to get in their boat and go. Time is short before the school year. If they goof off, they're wasting time. They want to spend it on the water. A rower wants to be on the water. They don't want to be on the land, they want to be on the water. My father-in-law sits on, lives on the Detroit River. During the summer, he, we cannot sit on the dock and have a civil conversation for the noise. These boats don't even come close to that. The comment was made earlier, is it going to impact the neighborhood? Yeah, but only in positive ways. If we, as a community, want to offer new residents and existing residents amenities, what better is there for a rowing club for our kids? I mean, this is, I got a son that's coming up now, and it would be really great if he didn't have to leave the island to do it. So if he could ride his bike to the club, or a short ride, that would be really terrific. I think most of the people who are concerned about the interference, they're only going to know these kids have come and gone by their coffee maker waking them up in the morning. They're not even going to know these kids were there. And the coaches are very strict. You know, the rules are very hard and fast, you don't break them. And interestingly enough, the coaches set the standard, but it's the upperclassmen that do the enforcement. They're hard about it, you know, they have rules to keep, and everywhere the Groseal rowers go, whether it's some meet or some, you know, Marietta in the spring break, these kids are welcomed back by these people who know them because of their reputation for their behavior, for their demeanor, their respectfulness. It's really a good program. The club runs an awesome program, and it would be a great asset to this island.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Again, moving around the room. And all the way in the back, ma'am? Come on up, please, and give us your name and your address.
Catherine Kostroff, 23215 West River Road, Corner Ferry. I just want to address a couple of issues. The first one, being noise. I actually rowed for Groseal for four years varsity. I rowed one of my years with Coach Scott, three years with his sister. My last year, I was actually a Cox, so I'm probably one of the only people in this room that can talk about how loud a Cox actually is. Yes, you can turn the volume up and down on a Cox box. It is basically a microphone like this that I am speaking into, but I'm not talking into it, I'm yelling into it. At one point, I was actually pulled over by a coach's boat during one of our races because he could hear what I was yelling. The other boat and I, we're actually having sort of a fight in between the two of us what we were yelling between the River V boat and our boat. We were kind of having a little tiff back and forth to each other. You can hear it. There are points where, not often, but there are times where, right now, from Windott, they row down, and I know that the boats are rowing down because I can hear them coming down, and I think, oh, great, I'm gonna go watch Groseal. A boat coming down, you can hear them. I don't know if you've ever been on a calm, out on the water on a calm day, but noise carries. It carries very, very well. You can hear, I can hear our neighbors across in Trenton, or if you're on East River, you can hear things. I don't think we're so much worried about the afternoon practice as much as five-thirty in the morning. And if you don't have a Cox box, or your Cox box breaks, you scream to get to that eighth person in the boat. I can't tell you how many times I had laryngitis that last year of rowing to get there. The other people in the boat don't talk, they are exhausted, but you are screaming to get to them. So the noise, whether you want to say it's there or not, you're yelling, you're yelling into that Cox box. You can hear it across the water. I can hear it now, when they're coming down, and I can tell you as a Coxswain, it's there. I love the sport of rowing, it was some of the four best years and times in my life, but at five-thirty in the morning, it's not exactly the times I want to have now. Another safety issue I just want to bring up, as an ex-rower, that I don't think has been brought up, running is a big part of rowing, and I know that we used to run a ton, sometimes two miles, four miles, six miles. There are sidewalks in Windott. Where are you going to run now? West River is not a good place to run. I've been, I've run on West River, and I've been told by many police officers, not a good place to run. If you're gonna run down Ferry, I guess that's another noise issue of thirty kids running down Ferry, or, you know, also a safety issue of how many of them are, are you in one single file line? You know, I mean, running is, was, I don't know if it still is, I'm going to imagine, you still run a large part of your workout, so where are they going to run now? We don't have sidewalks, so that was one safety issue. And then, just the last issue for noise, traffic safety is, yeah, I know, at five-thirty in the morning, the noise for me is not that they're hanging around, making a lot of noise at the boat club so much, but when you're leaving the boat club trying to get to first hour, I mean, you can go to Gray Drive now and see the high school students flying in crazy drivers now, but as a rower, you're told, like you said, to be respectful. And the one thing we were always told as rowers, you're gonna make to first hour, you're gonna stay awake in first hour, and you're gonna get an A in first hour. Use speed to get to first hour. I can't imagine the amount of traffic and the speed that they will be going around from West River to Ferry. I just think that's just gonna be a dangerous corner of them going around there. There are gonna be kids out at the bus stop at that point in time, whether there are, so I think that's just another traffic safety issue that needs to be brought up at that time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Chief, I wonder if you might comment, please, about traffic, the safe traffic, safety issues that have been raised, if you have any comments on running on West River Road, or the issue of speeding to get to class. You want to take the hike again?
I'm guessing he's not gonna encourage the speeding.
I think that's a...
No, the only problem that, you know, we can address the what-ifs, and I understand their concerns, and this is not saying that they're not real concerns, they may very well be, but there's so many what-ifs that, for me to address that, sure, if we have issues, we can address it. I mean, we'd be more than happy to. If there's a speed issue at any other time, we address those issues. So we do more radar checks on Gray's Drive than any street on Groseal, so that, I mean, we do address it when it comes up, but as a group or as a whole, right now, I really have no comment on what may occur.
Okay.
But if something occurs, we'll be more than happy to address that issue.
I'm sure you would address it, too. Thank you. Let's ask the question about the running. Running as a part of training, and any plans associated with where and when and how?
There will be no running. We will have ERGs, or rowing machines, in the facility which will be used for conditioning. And as a side note, the team has not run up and down Biddle at all for years, and so running is not an issue.
Okay. All right, let's move on to additional...